Recording in progress.
Access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. However, this particular meeting will have a public hearing at seven fifteen and we will have an opportunity for public comment. First, we'll confirm that all members of the planning board are present when I call your name. Please respond with I, Paul Albert.
I.
Artie Crocker.
Hi.
Natasha Spada.
Hi.
Jean McKnight.
Hi.
Excellent. For others that are participating in the meeting, please also be aware that others may be able to see you. And anything you share or state will be a matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website at needhamma.gov, unless otherwise noted. The ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. I'll introduce our speakers on our agenda. And after they've concluded their remarks, board members will be asked for any comment, questions or motions. When the opportunity comes up for public comment, I'll go over some of the ground rules at that time. We obviously remind you to state your name and address clearly for the record. But with that, we'll go ahead. And tonight, we'll start our meeting. We had minutes on the agenda initially, but I understand other board members need some time to review those. So we do not, so we will not be reviewing or commenting on the minutes tonight. Unless I see anyone raise their hand otherwise. So that moves us to a report from Planning Director and Board Members. So Jean, or rather, Lee.
I just, the only thing I wanted to report was this to remind people, we have a meeting on July the 12th. And on that agenda, we have minutes and we have the decisions for the three projects that we heard at the last meeting, which is the project that one forty Kendrick Street, which is the roof deck. Babson, which was the batting cage or batting building. And basically, and the last one would be the adjustments to the town common. And so that agenda packet went out today so that you'll have it for next Tuesday's meeting. I also wanted to let you know that it looks likely now that this remote meeting option is going to get extended by the state. I know that it passed the Senate and there was some movement, I think, in the House and they're trying to get something in place prior to July fifteenth. So that the flexibility that we had, you know, pre-COVID gets extended. And so that's, that's kind of, that's moving forward. And it looks like they're looking to extend that option sometime through the middle of December twenty twenty-three. And then I just wanted to let everybody know, I think we all know that the, we had to adjust our meeting schedule for September. We had originally scheduled the meeting for September sixth and we moved it to the seventh because there's an election or the primaries are actually being held on the sixth and we can't concurrently hold public hearings on an election day. So I don't know, Jean, if you wanted to do any reporting on the next meeting of the Housing Working Group, which is on the twenty-eighth, I know we did report at the last meeting, we haven't met as a group since then, that there was any update you wanted to provide.
Only that we're anxiously awaiting the revised MBTA community guidelines. And knowing what those guidelines are will inform particularly any recommendations that the Housing Plan Working Group has going forward on rezonings for multifamily housing. So I think it's, you know, it's going to be very, very tight to get those guidelines. Have a meeting of the zoning subgroup, make a report to the Housing Plan Working Group. And wrap that up as quickly as we will need to for that meeting.
So just one note, I appreciate that update, Jean. Although the governor and the State House may approve the ability to do these Zoom meetings, I think the town is looking to do, you know, hybrid so that it's an, so we're in, we are in person. And hopefully members of the public will come in person too. And then, but there is an option for people to be able to access the meetings going forward, you know, in a hybrid way remotely. But we will start to convene again in person fairly soon. I can't remember what's our next meeting?
Yes, August sixteenth is hybrid.
Okay. So.
Excuse me, yes. The July twelfth is not, the July twelfth meeting is Zoom and the, but the August meeting is hybrid.
Um, to clarify what you said about the legislation that might be passed. Did you say it's going to allow for remote, remote meetings to the middle of December two thousand twenty-three?
Yes.
A whole year and a half.
Yeah, December fifteenth, twenty twenty-three was what went through that.
But Jean, that, that doesn't mean we're going to be by Zoom.
We don't, yeah, we.
The law, we'll give you that option and then you can, you know, you can do hybrid. And if you, you can do, you can use, you know, you can use both options if you want, or you know, mix and match, however you wish to use them.
Yeah, I think it's important, I think it's important that we do get back to some version of live. I know we're scheduled.
Party we are.
Yeah, yeah, well, Adam, speaking, I understand that. I'm agreeing that it's, that I'm agreeing that it's, we're getting back to the hybrids starting in August, but that we keep some version that we just keep it, we already, we keep the version of hybrid. So I know that we've had the guidelines, how many people have to be live versus how many people move. Although with the extension of these laws, that may negate the, how many, how many, if the chair or the co-chair has to be there in person. I'm not sure if that, I'm not sure if the extension of the law negates the requirement of the chair and co-chair to be there. The main point being is, it's important for, it's important for the public that we have live, that we have live meetings for them possibly to be live. Is I think we're, I think we lose something then by staying remote. I think we're losing stuff.
I just had Paul.
So my first comment is, once the bill is passed and signed and it goes into law, Jean and I certainly will read the legislation, see what we're allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do. Second, I'm keeping my mind open and I'd like us all to keep our options open because there are enough experts out there who feel that there's going to be, or there's, there is very possibly going to be another surge in the fall. They're already talking about how, how the latest mutations, the BA four and the BA five are even more contagious than, than the Omicron that we've had. And so let's just wait and see what happens.
Right, well, we'll resolve it as we go forward. And I have COVID, I was diagnosed on Saturday. So I.
Are you feeling, are you okay?
Thank you for asking. I am, I'm a little hoarse, so, and it's also adversely affecting my blood sugar levels, so it's a little harder for me to stay in control. So if you see me eating tonight, you'll have to forgive me, but I promise I'm not going to be eating a massive pizza or a container of ice cream. It's just going to be, you know, versions of these bars anyways, so I apologize, but.
I have some really nice, some really nice, some really nice celery and carrot juice I made. I'll swing it over to you if you want, it's really good.
Now that might, now that might be helpful, but let us start, you know, where we left off with our public hearing for fifteen, for five fifty-seven Highland Avenue. With the Bull Finch Group. And with that, Alex, I'll ask you to bring over the, the list of speakers that I have, which include Robert Slager, the president of Bull Finch, and Tim Sullivan, Bull Finch's attorney from Goldston and Stores. I believe we also have Mark Diorio from Bull Finch. And we have architects Eric Wyant and Thomas Ertz, traffic engineers from VHB, Sean Manning and Matthew Duranlow, landscape architects Paul Finger and Eric Joseph, a lab safety consultant Elizabeth Gilman-Dwayne, and a MEEP FP engineer, Robert Andrews. And just before we start with the Bull Finch team to remind everyone that when we last left off, we were going to focus tonight on traffic, you know, and parking. And one of the things that I, and what we will do here is we'll have an opportunity for the developer to present their, their traffic presentation, the traffic analysis and parking analysis, which we might not really discuss, we're not really going to intend to discuss site activity in detail. And I recall that the last session, Mr. Sullivan, I see that you're here. I had asked if the site plan was, was prepared based on a fifty-foot setback on the old or the new layout of Gould Street. I think you had said that it was off of the existing current layout, the old layout of Gould Street. And I asked you to provide an updated site plan. I know that we have an updated site plan effectively dated today. However, it doesn't show that fifty-foot setback from what would become the new layout of Gould Street. And and so we're not really going to be, so that's going to limit a little bit of what we're discussing tonight. And that's obviously based on the current mitigation proposal. As we're bringing people over and populating the Brady Bunch, one of the things that I don't see here is Rebecca from GPI. Is Rebecca available? She on the.
I just brought her over and I.
Oh, here's Rebecca.
If, if the team sees anybody that I missed, let me know, or if, if somebody's watching and they should have been brought over, raise your hand. But I didn't see Paul Finger and there was someone else I didn't see. So just let me know if I missed anyone.
So again, forgive me before I, Tim, give you the conch or Robert. It might be helpful for people that are following along because you'll start with your traffic analysis. The page in our in our packets, the response to our peer review comments from Rebecca begins on page two thirteen. But I'm not sure if you're intending to start there, if you're intending to start with, you know, your proposed, how you, you know, how you intend to do that. So just let us know and I'll send it over.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. We appreciate you making time for us this evening. As you know, my name is Robert Slager. I am the president of Bull Finch and we're pleased to be with you, with you here this evening once again to discuss our redevelopment of the former Muzzy site at five fifty-seven Highland Avenue into a world-class life science office, research and development facility. I'd like to also remind everyone that we do have a website that focuses specifically on this particular project that is known as five fifty-seven Highland dot com. And we do share with that website each of our meetings, consultations, discussions, questions publicly, so that everyone has the collective benefit of our responses. At the first public hearing with the planning board on June seven, we covered the following aspects of the project. The architecture, overall site view, landscape architecture, landscape design, sustainability, environmental lab safety, and to a large extent, transportation overviews. We received some very good questions and comments following that meeting. And Tim Sullivan, Sullivan of Goldston and Stores has submitted a letter to this board responding to many of those items, comments and questions, as well as those that have come up following the planning board hearing. I'm joined this evening by the same team we had with you in our last meeting. And all of us are happy to discuss any questions that the board may have or members of the public and respond to those as well. If there's not time to answer those questions, anyone is welcome to email our site, known as questions@fivefiftysevenhighland.com. And we'll be happy to have a member of our consulting team respond back to you. Of course, our project architect, managing principal of Stand Tech Architecture and Design, Eric Wayant is here with us again this evening. Eric Joseph from Paul Finger Associates Landscape Architect is here. Tim Sullivan from Goldston and Stores, our counsel. Adam Jennings, our sustainability consultant from AHA Engineers, along with his associate Bob Andrews and Sean Manning and Elizabeth Grob from VHB, our transportation consultants. We were asked to focus our discussions this evening on transportation and that's exactly what we're prepared to do. Sean from VHB and Elizabeth will walk you through our traffic study that we prepared, the improvements we are contemplating, as well as our responses to the comments we received from two separate peer review consultants, one being a consultant of Judith Nitch Engineers, also a traffic engineering firm based in Boston, as well as the town's consultant Rebecca Brown and John Dietz from GPI Greenman, who had prepared the original traffic consult, traffic study a year, year and a half or so ago in connection with the zoning. As we discussed in our last meeting, we have spent and continue to spend countless hours over the past several months going through the project with both town boards, town departments, members of the public, the community and others associated with this project. We have held seven neighborhood meetings in both April and May to discuss our plans and to gather public input before our first meeting with the planning board on June seven. The input we've received during this process has been very valuable and has helped shape improvements that we will walk you through tonight with respect to traffic. I'm pleased to report that Sean is going to show you three different options for traffic improvements and explain the reasoning and justification behind each of those alternatives. One of the comments made from the community in prior meetings was the space is too large, Gould Street is too wide. Perhaps there's a way to tone down the entrance to TV place and at the same time provide the safety and efficiencies the neighborhood was looking for. With that, I would like to hand the presentation over to Sean to walk us through the results of the benefits that he has achieved and we have accomplished from our town input. Thank you very much, Sean.
Robert, thank you very much. And Mr. Chair, planning board members, again, my name's Sean Manning. I am a principal with the firm VHB, ninety-nine High Street, Boston, Mass. I'm going to ask my colleague Matt Duranlow to pull up our slide presentation and maybe we will skip directly to the transportation slide. There are some other site slides that we may elect to share later in the presentation, but of course want to focus you on traffic. And we can go to the next slide. So we're going to walk you through, it's essentially a slide summary of what we have done with our traffic study, how we have delineated impacts, how we have devised improvement and mitigation solutions that support those impacts, but also support really a tremendous amount of community collaboration that have happened over the last three or four months that have really augmented where we, where we started earlier this winter. We can click on the next slide, please, Matt. So when, when delineating traffic impacts, it really starts with the program, the project program is sort of the baseline ingredient to quantifying what those numbers might be. And again, just to remind folks, in this case, we're talking about a project that's roughly five hundred thousand square feet, split evenly between office and life sciences, which is denoted as R and D in the ITE Trip Generation Manual, which we will talk about in subsequent slides. And then a relatively small amount of retail that we see as supporting use to the project and as a community friendly use, which I know has been spoken about at greater length in past hearings. Again, the delineation of the, of the site plan is very analogous with the zoning effort with a garage on the north side of the site, secondary access via TV place, primary access on Gould opposite the Wingate driveway with essentially two buildings connected by an atrium. Also note, I know we're not talking about site plans, but it's sort of traffic oriented. You'll, you'll, you'll notice the loading dock, which we just noted in this plan, but has been shifted over. I know that was a comment from the planning board previously, the visibility from Gould Street. And if there are questions on that, I'm sure Eric and his team can speak to the architectural aspects of that. Next slide, please, Matt. So real quick, just to walk you through what we have done. This really started with the, with the zoning effort that was completed in two thousand twenty by the town, which was on the traffic side, was, was led by Greenman Peterson. They were directed to look at the impacts of certain alternatives, understanding full buildout of the zoning area, which includes the Muzzy site as well as the adjacent Channel Five WCVB site, which of course is not under consideration. We have taken that information and, and had really a lot of very close collaboration, both with the town and GPI, who now serves as the peer reviewer for this project. And oh, by the way, the Needham Heights Alliance, who has retained Nitch Engineering to also be a third peer reviewer. And we've received input from them as well. And of course, very close consultation with Mass DOT because we do have Mass DOT controlled roadways, essentially Highland Avenue as it goes over one twenty-eight, but really Highland Avenue into the town in Needham to Webster Street. It's actually a state controlled roadway. We've submitted a traffic study, we've received input from both peer reviewers. We've shared this information with the community in multiple coordination meetings through the spring. We've talked about our mitigation and improvements. We've received a ton of feedback and we've really tried to listen and incorporate that feedback into our mitigation. To all of that, so next slide, please, Matt. In terms of what we look at, we start with existing conditions, which are two thousand twenty-two, and we can speak about that and the challenges of COVID and what that's meant, not just for this project, but really all traffic projects and how COVID has impacted traffic. And Mass DOT requirements are to look seven years out in the future. So we, we take that information, we layer on top of it, the impacts of the project, those anticipated impacts, plus the impacts of all other known projects that are happening in the area. So we get a clear, complete, comprehensive look of what's going to happen seventy years out, understand what those impacts are and make sure we're going in the right direction in terms of improvements that might be needed to support the project. Next slide, please. So in terms of intersections, these little circles are denoting all the intersections that we looked at in connection with the project. And I will tell you, our strategy with this was to be as complete, comprehensive and conservative to the greatest degree possible. The reason, the zoning effort looked at a number of intersections between Highland and Central along Gould. We really tried to extend well beyond that. And we did that primarily for community reasons and for the planning board as well to, again, just get a really complete understanding of what those impacts might be. And I will say, you know, we've shared this again with GPI, with Mass DOT and with Nitch and received very positive feedback that indeed, you know, this is well above and beyond the call of duty in terms of scope to be looked at. If we go to the next slide, please. So one of the first things that we do, and this is, you know, the one aspect of COVID that I wanted to bring up is understand existing site trips. Because of course, while our project is going to generate trips and those trips are based upon the use and scale of use that's proposed, one thing you need to do is understand what's happening on the existing site and, and take a credit, so to speak, for that trip making. Because of course, those uses are being replaced and won't be there anymore. A little graph on the, on the left-hand side of this slide is denoting what we actually counted in two thousand twenty. And these are the credits that indeed we took in the traffic study that was submitted to the town and to Mass DOT. You can see it's something on the order of sixty-one trips in the morning and eighty-seven in the afternoon. I bring this up because we know that these uses when operating at their full capacity, pre-COVID, were much higher than this. We, we know from sales data that the car wash alone was washing on some days thirteen hundred cars a day, so twenty-six hundred trips from the car wash alone. And we know Muzzy was winding down their operations layered on top of chip shortages and car shortages that you all read about in the news that also impacted their operations. Nonetheless, we couldn't take a credit based upon what I thought those operations were. They're based upon actual traffic counts, but I bring that up as an element of conservatism in terms of how we did the study. And you're going to hear this word conservative over and over as I, as I go through our presentation. So next slide, please. So these are the trips that were used to denote impacts and the trips that were used to determine roadway improvements on Gould, on Highland and at the intersection of Gould and Central. I'm not going to walk you through every single column here. Of course, if there are questions later, happy to take them. But essentially, we delineate morning and evening peak hour trips and daily trips for our three uses. Take out existing site trips that are going away, which leaves you total, which is the right-hand side. And you see some pretty lofty numbers, five thousand trips over the course of a weekday, which is a number that's been recited by the community a number of times. And I can understand that, it, it, it's a big number. And five hundred plus trips in the morning and evening peak hour. What's important to note is that while these are the numbers we use to denote impacts, these are highly likely not the numbers that we will see in real life when the development is fully occupied. And I'm going to walk you through the reasons why that is the case. First and foremost, the rates that we use come out of what's called the ITE Trip Generation Manual. This is national data, which is representative of really a broad spectrum of uses that get categorized into the two uses that we're applying to this project, office and R and D. What we have done, and I think this is pretty interesting stuff, we have gone and, and pulled out data from the city of Cambridge, which, oh, by the way, is the, I would call it the national standard for TDM monitoring, reporting, reporting and implementing of measures to, to reduce auto use. They just, they have a vast library of information because they require every project to collect that kind of information. And what's interesting, if you compare the ITE data to the Cambridge data and for folks that aren't in the traffic business, this, just so that you understand, this, these numbers have nothing to do with COVID. They have nothing to do with public transportation or walking or biking. This is sort of boiling down to that lowest common denominator. How many person trips does a certain type of use generate? And I can tell you that if, you know, you were the Cambridge Planning Board, we would be using those, those middle column rates. Though the IT rates are not allowed in the city of Cambridge because they're just so wildly high and conservative. And, you know, sometimes conservative is good, sometimes it's bad. I think in this case, it's good because we're trying to make sure that we're getting the mitigation right for the project. But in terms of numbers that people see that I know can be a little bit scary, I, I, I bring this up because the reality is type of uses are going to have a much lower rate of trip making than what we use to do the traffic study. We can click again, please. The, the other thing is mode share. And we have conducted this traffic study under the assumption that those high rates that I showed you on the previous slide would result in every single person coming to this site via car. And of course, we're on one twenty-eight, you know, we're, we're on, we're on the edge of the suburbs outside of downtown Boston. And, and for sure, the, the auto share rate is going to be prevalent and it's going to be high. However, we know, because we see this in other Class A office and life sciences space on Route one twenty-eight, that attracting the best and brightest is the key to tenants of these buildings being successful. And that includes connecting themselves to any transit mode possible to attract reverse commuters. And we are certainly going to do that both from the green line and from commuter rail. commuters. And we are certainly going to do that both from the green line and from commuter rail. And we believe we can achieve something on the order of twelve to fourteen percent on on transit walk bike share. And then the other aspect, of course, is work from home, which, as you all know, is something that's really become prevalent with the advent of the internet. Uh and COVID has only put a giant exclamation point on that reality. And in this representation, we're suggesting uh that work from home percentage could be fourteen percent. I can attest in, you know, the office that I manage, which is a hundred employees, we routinely do not see any more than fifty percent of the office present at any given time. So I, you know, I believe that number even uh in this representation, it it is probably low. But let's click again, please, Matt. So when you look at all of those things and you look at the estimated new vehicle trips, and again, the left hand column is what we did the traffic study on. It's what we based all the mitigation and improvements on. The middle column is more likely what we will see in real life in terms of numbers. So I know I spent a lot of time on this, but I think it was really important to do that and for both the planning board and for the public to understand that. That actual trip making is going to be significantly lower than what we use to support the traffic. And let's go to the next slide, please, Matt. So back to those actual numbers, uh what do we do with those numbers? The first thing we do is try and figure out how will people come from the surrounding communities, their homes to get uh to work and how might they return uh back home? And what we use is census tract data, journey to work data to help us understand in different census trucks what those populations are and where they're coming from and what roads they might use to get here. And of course, this site uh because of its location, we believe will be dominated by the use of Route one twenty eight. And in this representation, again, I won't go through every number, but we believe something on the order of two thirds of the traffic will come to and from directly on one twenty eight uh with other trips uh distributed to other local streets, in particular, those communities that to the that are to the north and west and may not necessarily use one twenty eight uh to get here. And that is all accounted for in all of those intersections that we shared in one of the more previous slides uh in our study. And next slide, please. Uh so again, this is just closing in and showing what those actual trips are. And again, as you would expect, uh those heavier volumes are on Route one twenty eight. Gould, of course, is where our site driveways are. That's that's where those cars are 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 tending to group at those driveways. We are accounting for other cut through traffic uh on Hunting, although we will believe it'll be quite low. It's certainly a regional street and has been brought up by the community. Uh and we do have uh accounted for that uh in the traffic study. Next slide, please, Matt. So we've also looked very closely at parking, and I know the board and the public is aware that we are uh making a request uh for uh a percentage of parking that is lower than zoning. Uh zoning uh suggests three point three spaces per thousand for both our office and R and D, and I will get into some numbers that 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 back this up. Uh we're also going to have a significant amount of bike parking, both indoor secured bike parking uh for employees, but also outdoor bike parking for people coming to the amenities spaces that are that are on site as well. And then, of course, E V, uh we've mentioned this previously, uh we are going to have twenty five percent of the spaces day one be uh equipped with E V charging stations. Uh we certainly believe that's the right thing to do. We believe E V is uh very close to uh a place that, you know, many more of us are going to be driving that type of vehicle, you know, in particular with gas prices the way they are, uh just another catalyst to 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 push that even quicker. Uh next slide, please, Matt. So here is a a a table that helps denote why we believe that parking demand is going to be lower than the seventeen hundred-ish spaces that zoning would suggest. And there 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 are a number of factors that go into it. But the first is the R and D uh component of the project. And I'll point you to the third column, uh which is entitled employee patron density. Uh office density tends to be in the in the three-ish range in terms of people per thousand. Uh and interestingly enough, is is very close to uh or exactly what the what the rate of parking is for a thousand, again, suggesting a parking space for pretty much every human occupying that space. Life Sciences Space has a far lower density, person density than office does, and that is certainly one driver uh of 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 why we're suggesting lower parking. Um the second is all those factors that we talked about before with trip making uh that there will be a percentage of public transportation users. There will be some walkers and bikers, and for sure, there will be a percentage of the population that is going to work from home multiple days a week. All of those things are going to drive that parking down. Um I can tell you that in my own experiences, uh certainly looking at Founders Park with children before that project was approved by the town in Needham, but also other projects that I've been involved in in Lexington in Wall Fam where uh owners have elected to stick with zoning because it's just easier to do that and because brokers have suggested that these spaces on one twenty eight need to have that level of parking to be rentable have resulted in large parking garages that just never get full ever. And we just believe this is the environmentally responsible thing to do, to go with a little less parking, certainly have more than enough to accommodate who's coming here. We don't want to be underparked, but we don't want to be overparked. Uh and certainly happy to answer your question.
Sean?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure if you can hear me.
I can.
I'm not sure if there's an echo as well. Hopefully not. If you want to take this question after, that's fine, but I uh and I'll talk about this later at the end, but just because you're dealing with this with parking, you have your note, your footnote um that relates to existing sites and R and D sites or lab sites in Cambridge. But my understanding, and I'm I'm sure others have friends that uh even live in Needham that work in Cambridge or their offices in Cambridge and they'll they'll commute, so they're not specifically taking their car to the office when they're in Cambridge. So I wonder if we need to reconsider this parking demand more on either a Newton model in Wells Ave or uh in uh parts of Wealth uh Wall Fam or Lexington that don't, you know, that people aren't taking the subway into work or aren't taking the commuter rail into work. And how would you think that that changes the picture if we were using Lexington or Well Fam or Wells Ave?
But that's a terrific question, Mr. Chair, and I I I think maybe I've explained this in a way that that may have confused you and and others. The employee patron, those aren't employees and patrons who are parking. Those are all employees in the building. And in in, again, we use Cambridge because they they require all tenants and owners to do very detailed surveying every year. So these aren't people who are driving and parking. These are all people in the building irrespective of how they got there. We've simply taken that density and said, okay, if all those people elected to park, this would be the parking number. So it's 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 completely uh differentiated from mode share use, which is only going to drive this number down even lower, actually. And 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 maybe that's a follow up question either through the board or, you know, or through G P I, you know, I suspect we would get a a follow up response from them. We could absolutely provide a wealth of information on this.
And then to be clear, so I understand you're currently looking for a waiver from what the zoning requires of sixteen hundred spaces. So give or take a waiver of maybe two hundred spaces to the fourteen oh eight and potentially uh another a hundred and thirty or so. And what I, if I remember correctly, the parking garage has on average a hundred and thirty parking spaces per floor. Um so does that mean that uh there is a good opportunity to reduce the height of the parking structure by a floor?
Mr. Chair, I I would I would defer to the proponent on this. I, you know, I I I think at the end of the day, having a parking count that matches the exact calculation that we've shown may not be prudent. Yeah, and and certainly that's why we're we're our ask is fourteen hundred and eight spaces, even though this calculation is suggesting a lower number. This is really representational to show that we believe the demand can fit into what is proposed and still have some safety factor and comfort that the that the facility is not going to be underparked.
Okay, we can address that further later. Thank you very much. I apologize for interrupting.
Oh, no problem. You're welcome. And why don't we go to the next slide if folks don't have questions? So this is a representative or representative, representational slide of of all the mitigation uh that we're proposing. Uh I won't touch upon all these because we have details on all of them, but I can tell you our goal is to provide the most complete multimodal solution and improvements at a at a at a knuckle near one twenty eight that certainly uh needs improvement to support the project, but I would say more so needs improvement to help fix some preexisting conditions that the town experiences, in particular at the intersection of Gould and Highland. But that, why don't we go to the next slide? So what is on screen is is what we had presented at the last planning board hearing and what was submitted in our traffic impact study uh that was presented to the town and to Mass D O T uh back in the spring. And just quickly to walk you through this, this this is essentially uh us adopting the full build improvements that were suggested be needed to support the full build of the rezoning district, both five fifty seven Highland as well as the adjacent Muzzy site. And I want to direct your attention to three things because this is what you're going to see in some of these new alternatives that we want to share. The first, the first is the bike lanes, which you show in green. These are on-street bike lanes. We added those in. They really weren't included in the rezoning effort, but we certainly believe that having bike mobility uh is important. We want to augment those improvements that have happened on Highland Avenue. I can tell you that we've received a lot of community feedback about concerns with this type of bike facility for kids in families and might we not consider uh a different approach that would result in separated bike lanes, so bike lanes that are at sidewalk level, not on the street. Uh the other two things that I want to direct your attention to are first TV place that sort of the general feedback was that the TV place intersection was looking awfully big. I can tell you that the project does not need those improvements. This was really uh our attempt to just say, you know, while we're doing this work, maybe it makes sense to do work that may support future development on the C V B site. Understanding that that is not a proposal that's on the table. It's not a proposal that may never be on the table, but, you know, it's not for me to say. Um and then the other thing I would make mention of is the rezoning effort really, you know, again, using the word conservative, had some very conservative assumptions built into it, not the least of which was something on the order of a hundred and twenty thousand square feet of retail space. And I bring that up because that is uh of all the uses that are that are permitted in the rezoning district, that is the use that is the highest has the highest potential for trip generating values. As you know, our project has only ten thousand square feet of retail in it. And I'm not so sure that the C V B site could ever attain the remaining retail uh that was included in the rezoning effort. A hundred thousand square feet of retail just for uh folks on the line would be like a a Walmart and a Lowe's on top of each other. It's it's a tremendous amount of retail, and I don't know that that would fit on what's left the last twenty percent of the site. So we did refocus on that intersection. We also looked at the approach of Gould to Highland, and we have a zoom in on it a little bit later, but you see there's a double left turn uh from Gould onto Highland towards one twenty eight. We believe that's necessary. In fact, we believe that's necessary, even if this project doesn't move forward. Um but what we were more focused on are the separation of the through lane to Hunting and the right turn lane to Highland into town, which we had determined in connection with the project that a shared through right was more than appropriate uh to have this intersection work acceptably. We elected to go with the separated lane simply to uh acknowledge that that's what the rezoning effort had suggested, but we're now coming back based upon feedback that the intersection is big, that, you know, maybe we go to a a shared through right hand turn lane. But let's let's look at these concepts, and I can speak to it in greater detail as we share these. So why don't we go to the next slide, please, Matt? So with that tee up, this is one of our two alternatives. And again, let's start with the bike lanes because that's key. Uh most aspects of this are the same, including a a double left turn lane uh from Gould onto Highland, signal adjustments to support those improvements, signalization of our main intersection with Wingate, uh ADA PED uh improvements to support that. Um improvements at um TV place and Gould that remains an unsignalized intersection. And then Matt, maybe point to the left because this has also come up. The addition of a crosswalk uh in some type of signalized intersection, it wouldn't be a traffic signal, but it would more likely be an R R F B, which that's called a rapid repeating flashing beacon. You see those a lot in uh rail trails or L E D pedestrian lights. Could almost think of that as a phase one to future improvements on the railroad right away, but certainly a way to get from the sidewalk across the street to our amenities. Um but most notably, if you look at the uh east, excuse me, the the, yes, the east side of Gould Street, we are showing a two-way separated bike lane. So that is a bike lane that would not be on the street. It would be at sidewalk level. It's not the sidewalk. There's a there's a two-way bike lane, and then there is an eight-foot sidewalk behind that bike lane on the west side uh of Gould. And we would rebuild the existing sidewalk on the east side of Gould. And oh, by the way, uh we don't have a picture of it. Well, we don't have survey for it yet, but we're also looking at rebuilding the east side of Gould, actually, all the way to knowing that road. That was a community uh comment, and uh the proponent has agreed to that pretty much on the spot at one of our community meetings uh since the last planning board meeting.
Sean, does that mean, does that mean your bike lane in option two and and improved sidewalk would run the whole length of central of of Gould Street from Highland Avenue to set to Central Avenue? Is that right?
Uh, that is not, Mr. Chair. What what we are suggesting here is a two-way cycle track that would run from the Highland Gould intersection essentially to the crosswalk at the abandoned railroad right away. Our belief, and 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 we haven't studied this in great detail, but once you get beyond the railroad right away, the road gets awfully narrow. Uh, once you sort of leave the commercial district, you get into a lot of residential properties, the the ability to widen, to put that type of facility into Central, looks like it would uh be a burden on those residential properties. And what we're suggesting is after the crosswalk that we would go to uh shallow markers that would bring you uh to Central Avenue.
Thank you.
And we can go to the next slide, please. So option three is essentially from a roadway standpoint, identical to option two, with the exception of the two-way cycle track has now been shifted to the west side of Gould Street. So in this scenario, uh you see an eight-foot sidewalk adjacent to the five fifty seven site. You see uh a two-way cycle track on uh the west side of Gould Street. Uh again, that is not the sidewalk. It's a two-way cycle track, and there's a sidewalk for pedestrians next to that way cycle track. All the other aspects, the crosswalk at the railroad right away, signalization, lanes, TV place are all essentially identical to the previous version. And why don't we go to the next slide? I'm actually in the interest of time. I'm going to skip these because I think we've talked about these. I'm happy to come back if uh, Mr. Chair, you or other planning board members have questions on these, but these are really just sort of zoom ins uh on each aspect. And representationally, we're we just happen to be showing the version that has the two-way cycle track adjacent to the site, but I know this is a this is open ended in terms of where that design might advance.
Can you remind us again, sorry, between two and three, what's the what's the difference? It's just that it it moves to the
It's just, it's essentially what side of the street the bike lanes are on.
And which one do you think is 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 better?
Uh, I am interested to hear uh from the board and others. We we we've heard community feedback. I will say we have heard differing opinions on that. Um, you know, I know that there's a a setback question that's out there, and I don't know how different options impact uh that. Um but what I will certainly say is whether it's option two or option three, they're both certainly uh significantly uh superior to the to the on-street bike lanes.
Okay. Okay.
What what we tried to do is to come up with a program that provided the most amount of safety to families that we heard as a result of our community meetings, uh which was the number one priority as opposed to focusing on bicyclists who would be coming to and from the site. The consensus was that the first priority should be families who lived in the residential neighborhood uh taking advantage of those bicycle paths and bicycle lanes. And that's why we shifted them to a uh dual path on uh the entire west of the edge of Gould Street.
Yeah, no, thank you. I I understood that part. I just was trying to figure out the difference between the two and the pros and cons. So thank you.
Sure thing. Let's go to the next slide, Matt. So so this is the intersection of Gould and Central, which we've been able to advance uh since our first planning board hearing. Uh there's still work to do here, but you know, what what we have been able to figure out, which I think is important, given the residential nature of the intersection, that we don't see at this point in time any right-of-way impacts to any adjacent homes, maybe with the exception of you see, Matt, maybe point to the mast arm uh on the opposite side. We may need a small easement for that mast arm foundation, which is the foundation is primarily below grade, so you wouldn't see it. Um but sidewalks, crosswalks would all be uh ADA compliant. And again, this this is an important uh improvement uh more so for slowing people down and creating gaps. It certainly provides some operational benefit, but we also believe it's going to help with some of the cut-through issues that I'm going to talk about on all of slides in the Noanet neighborhood. And let's go to the next slide, please. So again, this is just a sort of a recap on our our bike and pedestrian improvements that we're going to have significant bike parking again. Secure bike room for employees, outdoors for visitors, for the amenity space, for the retail space, uh the fitness path, which I have not touched upon, but uh Eric Way and his team certainly have in previous meetings. We can talk about that. Again, all the great amenities uh that are going to be on site uh our two-way separated bike lane, whether that's on the east or west side. I know that's uh open for discussion. And again, reconstruction of that of the sidewalk, not just adjacent to our site on either side of Gould, but the extension of the west sidewalk to Noanet, which is another seven hundred feet of sidewalk on Gould that would be improved in connection with the project. Next slide, please. Again, the crosswalk at the railroad right of way, we're showing uh two options here. The left is 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 an RRFB that generally is a is a button that you press and you get some strobe lights that that provide indication to a motorist that there's a pedestrian looking to cross the street. Uh the right-hand solution, which I believe folks uh in town may be familiar with, I've seen these installed in other places in Needham. Uh that's an LED pedestrian, LED enhanced uh pedestrian warning sign. These tend to be solar powered. Uh again, they're the the whole point is to really accentuate and provide atten- you know, attention to motorists that they're, you know, they're they're approaching a pedestrian crossing. There may be pedestrians there and they really need to be careful uh and slow down. And certainly at that crosswalk, uh we believe that's going to be important, both, you know, in 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 terms of people coming from Wingate and coming from the Noanet neighborhood that want to use these amenities. And for sure, when that railroad railroad right of way becomes something else, uh you know, most likely a pedestrian-oriented solution that that this crosswalk being as safe as possible is going to be hugely important. Next slide, please. Um again, how we connect to transit uh is uh going to be hugely important. We want to be as environmentally friendly as possible, but I will tell you that the future tenants of this building are going to demand this because it's again how they attract the best and the brightest. Uh the proponent has committed to a fully electric solution, which is not inexpensive. It's something on the order of a couple hundred thousand dollars for fully electric shuttle bus. But again, I you know, I I I think in terms of what Highland Innovation Center wants to be, it's it's a it's a a good uh sort of flagship thing to do in terms of, you know, one of the many things we're trying to do to be environmentally friendly. Next slide, please. Um again, Noanet Road, I know we talked about this last time. There've been follow-up conversations in terms of uh how commuters have recognized that that is a way to cut through and circumvent that central Gould intersection. We have a lot of experience with this. Again, in Cambridge, uh the proponent has uh noted uh issues that that they have combated at Cambridge Discovery Park. Uh I'm involved in another project, actually just to the east of that in Alewife that has uh a similar issue where time-restricted turning movements have been put in place. Uh a lot of information dissemination for people to understand that we really don't want commuters in local neighborhoods. Uh and of course, ticketing is a means of enforcement if 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 it comes to that. And I know the proponent uh is fully committed to funding that to uh change that travel behavior because it's unwanted, you know, whether this project happens uh or not. The next slide, please. Uh Hunting Road is another one. This is a little bit different. I fully understand Hunting Road uh is a cut-through street uh to uh places to the south and, you know, including Dedham. My sister actually lives in Needham uh in one of the neighborhoods off of Hunting Road, so I'm familiar with it. Um I can tell you that the reconstruction of the Highland Interchange and the Kendrick Interchange has resulted in volumes at Hunting and uh Gould and Highland going down significantly. This is not in the deck, but that has been counted by mass DOT. Nonetheless, I know speeds are an issue on Hunting and we are committed to working with the town to determine some strategic locations to put in radar-embedded speed limit signs, which I will acknowledge acknowledge not to be all end-all to getting people to stop speeding, but I will say you know, a fair amount of speeding happens from people who just realize aren't realizing they're going that fast, then they get that awareness and they slow down. So this will certainly be a nice step uh in that direction for slowing folks down on Hunting. Next slide, please. This is another interesting thing that came up from community conversations and 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 in particular, uh some folks that live on Satrum Road and at the intersection of Hunting and Satrum, that they're just seeing cars on and off, coming down Hunting, doing a three-point turn, making a U-turn and going back to Highland. We're we're trying to study this a little bit more. We we don't know if this is people getting off of one twenty eight and they mean to go to Newton Highlands and they are turning around. We also suspect it could be left turners on Gould. It's such a short left turn lane that to make the light they're going through and then turning around to go to one twenty eight. Um for sure, we believe that the improvement of the intersection is going to help with this, but we're going to do a little more research to sort of figure out what this is. It really has nothing to do with the project, but it's it it's an odd thing. I know it's a a safety concern that's been raised. We're certainly uh committed to helping these residents try and figure out what this is and see if we can fix this problem. But I bring it up because it was raised a number of times in community meetings. Um again, TDM, you know, we're gonna we're gonna do a a gold standard in terms of what needs to be done to encourage people not to drive. And again, I point to Cambridge Discovery Park because this proponent is uh acutely aware of what's done in Cambridge. And I would say that's the model that we're going to use here in terms of getting people to ride bikes and bike parking and uh requiring uh future tenants to have uh measurable transit pass subsidies and having real-time information. And of course, EV we've talked about. And then the big thing is is monitoring and uh, you know, I applaud the town for uh requiring this on on newer project. I think it's I think it's hugely important to understand uh in measure how projects are doing relative to what they say they're going to do. And again, I I I point to Cambridge because they're, they probably have the most stringent and progressive TDM uh requirements and reporting and monitoring in the country. And that's kind of the model we're going to use here. So, you know, we'll see how this sort of progresses, not just on this project, but other projects in the town. Uh as you start to get that information and 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 use it to figure out how to, you know, get the most out of uh proponents to be as environmental environmentally friendly as they can be. Uh I know I'm talking very long. This is really the full summary of all the things we're doing. I'm not going to go through that. Uh again, unless folks want me to, uh and of course, to have my information and Matt's, uh we are happy to take any questions and comments and have discussion tonight, but if people have thoughts thereafter, please reach out. We are happy to communicate with people one-on-one uh at their convenience. So thank you uh very much.
Presentation this evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, and we'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, uh Mr. Schleyer. I and also Sean as well. Um I at this point, I'd be interested in hearing uh from Rebecca from GPI. Um Rebecca, are you able to turn on your video and is your audio working? Oh.
Yes.
There you are.
Everyone hear me and see me okay?
We can. Before you begin, a question for you. Uh have you actually received? You were your response. You had two responses to the applicant. First, almost a governmental response in April in response to the uh the applicant's ENF. And then subsequently, I believe you wrote a letter to the town in response to their traffic impact study specifically for this project, for this application, I think on May twenty seven. And your and we've received what amounts to your response to um, you know, we've we just very recently received a response from the applicant on effectively responding to you on in your May twenty seven letter. And meanwhile, there have been some changes in the traffic plan since the March twenty second um uh TIAS or Transportation Impact and Access Study. So I'm not sure if you have some of those slides were even new to me, except we had just had them in the packet. We've only had them for a couple of days. So I'm not sure if you had to receive some of those most recent slides and changes or not.
Uh we did. So we received um the the responses from VHB um on Thursday of last week and um in that same packet had uh many of the slides that were presented tonight. I think a few of them might have been slightly different or not included in there originally, but we did um receive that package and we, although we haven't gone through all of the detail of the calculations and everything that were included, we did read through those uh responses um in preparation for tonight. Um just to be able to uh see if it it appeared that they have adequately addressed all of our comments. So they have gone through and provided a response um to all of our comments that we had in that original letter. Um and we are still kind of going through some of the details of of the analysis and everything. Um but I I can kind of talk about some general comments that we had as as we've gone through um what we have so far to date. Um obviously, the the couple of different plans are brand new to us um in terms of what's going to be happening along Gould Street um and with the intersection at Highland Avenue. Um you know, down through TV Place, um as well as the plan up at um at Central and Gould. Um that's a little bit new to us, although we we kind of knew what was going to be proposed there. Um and then the overview plan that you showed that showed kind of, you know, where signal timing improvements are proposed and all of the all of that. So um we're kind of still going through, making making sure that all of that makes sense um for what is being proposed. Um but yeah, hopefully that answers your question, Adam. Received and where we're at in our review.
That's very helpful, uh because I know some of this, you know, is a little more recent, but uh that's very helpful. So I'm handing over the con to you.
All right.
Thank you.
Um yeah, and in the interest of time, I I don't want to go through, you know, every single comment that we had in our original letter. Um as I mentioned, a lot of their responses do adequately address the comments that we had. Um so I'd kind of like to hit on the questions that we still have outstanding or the items that we see see as being outstanding um based on our review of that. Um just to kind of give some context to um to people listening, what we've been asked to do is to um review the reports that were provided by VHB um for consistency with the state and town standards and for uh general engineering practice on methodology and looking at the accuracy of the calculations and the analysis that were contained in there. Um we were also asked to identify any potential safety issues, uh look at potential crash patterns, sightlines, um anything that might be pedestrian bicycle safety, those types of elements. And then also identify any potential negative impacts to traffic operations at intersections um and assess the need for mitigation at any of those uh locations. When we're looking at what constitutes a negative impact or a situation that needs to be mitigated, uh there's some standards that we typically go by. So um in general, for arterial roadways and suburban conditions similar to Needham, um for mainline movements, you would generally want to achieve a level of service D or better um on those movements. And for um side street movements and left turn movements, you generally for a peak hour condition, those peak morning and afternoons strive to get a level of service E or better. In some cases, a level of service F may be acceptable, um where you have a volume to capacity ratio that's less than one. Um basically meaning you might have to wait a little bit longer because maybe the cycle of the light is long. Um but it there's still adequate capacity for you to get through the intersection. Um so in those cases and and also where queues um don't extend the available storage lengths within the lanes. So in those cases, a level of service F may be okay um for a peak condition on those those side street or left-turning movements. Um there may also be times um where in intersection um level of service may be degraded as a result of project impacts. For example, an intersection might go from a level of service A or B down to a C or D. Um and that would still be considered acceptable because it still is within the design guidelines or still within your target goal for traffic operations. So we wouldn't anticipate that the applicant would be trying to mitigate those. So when we're going through, looking at their traffic impacts, we're kind of looking for situations where they're significantly degrading the level of service of it of an intersection below that, you know, D level um or where there's already a level of service F that gets a lot worse or goes over capacity. So those are the kinds of things that we're looking for when we're doing our analysis. Um we did note a few locations where that was occurring and it sounds like some of those have been addressed um with the updated mitigation measures that are proposed. Um one of those was at the Highland Avenue Gould Street and Hunting Street intersection um where we noted that Hunting northbound approach was at a level of service F and over capacity in the morning peak hour. And it looks like the signal timings have been modified since then at that intersection for what's being proposed. Um bringing everything back to a VC ratio less than one um at that location. So it looks like that situation has been mitigated with the um current improvements that are being proposed at that location. Um we did also note a number of locations that were at a level of service F where there was a pretty significant impact um to delay from the project. Uh for example, at Highland Avenue and West Street, um there was a level of service F that was over capacity and an increase of uh twenty-two seconds in delay on Highland Avenue southbound in the PM. Um the applicant is now proposing some signal timing improvements at that location that do appear to mitigate that. Um and with those signal timing improvements, the greatest increase in delay that was occurring at any location was eight seconds. Um so we do agree that that signal timing improvement should mitigate that impact. At Highland Avenue and Webster Street was a very similar situation um with a level of service F on the Highland Avenue eastbound approach in the AM peak hour. Um they are proposing some signal timing improvements there that would bring it back to a level of service D. Um but Webster Street southbound is is still going to be um over capacity there with a um VC ratio greater than one point two. So pretty significantly over capacity. It is that way in the no-build condition too, though. That southbound approach is um similarly over capacity in the no-build. Um so they're not making that any worse than it is right now on that southbound approach. Um but it is still over capacity. So um there may be some slight additional modification to the timings that are proposed that could get that one a little bit better on that southbound approach. Um Highland Avenue at First Avenue. Um, Highland Avenue at First Avenue. Although this project isn't significantly impacting the operations at that intersection, so they're not adding much additional delay. Um, to any of the movements through that intersection, there is a long, um, there is a level of service F on the Highland Avenue westbound approach in the P M. That also has some long delays and queues and is significantly over capacity. Um, they have showed that with some signal timing improvements that can be returned to a level of service E. Um, and the overall intersection operations would go from an F to a D. Um, we just wanted to verify that the applicant is actually proposing to make those changes, just because the wording in it. Um, in the response. Suggested that it could be improved, but didn't make it clear whether or not the applicant was proposing to do it. Um, I believe it was one of the intersections that was identified in the graphic that you showed. Um, earlier this evening. Um, very similar situation at the Hunting. Road in Kendrick Street, um, where some signal timing improvements were proposed there. That would drastically improve that intersection as well. Um, and we just wanted to confirm that those improvements would actually be made. Um, in that case, that intersection is coordinated. With the signal at Kendrick Street and the I ninety five southbound ramps. Um, so we'd also need to make sure that the signal timing changes that are proposed there. Wouldn't impact the operations at the um, the Kendrick Street and I ninety five southbound ramps. And those were really the the traffic operations impacts that we noted. Um, so we also were obviously tasked with. Looking at um safety improvements as well. So we had previously identified um a few locations where. Um, intersections had crash rates that were higher than the statewide or district wide averages. Um, or where there were more than three crashes per year on average occurring at those locations and had asked the applicant to put together collision diagrams. Um, they did do those. Uh, the three intersections were at Highland Avenue and West Street. Um, Hunting Road and Kendrick. And Highland Gould and Hunting, obviously, the significant improvements that are being proposed. By the applicant and by Mass D O T at Highland Gould and Hunting. Will address a lot of the crashes that are occurring at those locations. Um, when we looked at the crashes that were occurring at Hunting Road and Kendrick. There was really no apparent consistency or pattern that was occurring with those crashes. There were a a limited number that did actually occur there. Um, but there were, the majority of them were angle collisions occurring between movements on different approaches to the intersection. Um, which might be an indication that red light running um might be initial issue or that the clearance intervals might not be long enough. Um, so because the applicant is looking at signal timing modifications at that location. We would just ask that they verify the clearance intervals are adequate for the the geometry of the intersection as well. Um, at Highland Avenue and West Street. Um, it was noted that in the responses that. Um, there were a number of angle collisions there, but really no consistency in. How the angle crashes were occurring. Um, a lot of them were, you know, people turning right from left turn lanes, things like that, that, you know. Were kind of unusual situations that were happening, but we did notice that two of the crashes at that location were uh bicycle crashes. Um, so that's one location where potential bicycle improvements. Could help with with reducing those bike uh crashes at that location. Um, one of the other things that we asked the applicant to do was uh look at um. Cueing at each of the intersections and making sure that cues are not extending back through adjacent intersections and. One location where we did notice some cues that would extend back significantly was at uh Gould Street and Central Street. Where the queue on Central Street eastbound. Would extend back beyond Nooneet Road. And that's important because um whenever the queues, you know, there's obviously been a concern from the neighborhood. About the cut through traffic that may occur with people trying to avoid the signal. So whenever cues are extending back beyond one of those side streets that could be used as a cut through route, it starts to encourage that cut through traffic. In on Gould Street, however, the cues were not backing up, so we wouldn't be as concerned about people. Cutting through from Gould Street over. Uh, through Nooneet and out to Central, particularly because the traffic signal at that location. Um, will actually facilitate them getting onto Central Avenue better. And the cues weren't extending back beyond any of the neighborhood streets. Um, but we might have a a slight concern about traffic coming through on Nooneet in the morning, in particular, when that. Key was backing up past um Nooneet Road. Um, so definitely as the um, as Mr. Manning mentioned. In his presentation, looking at some signage that could be implemented. Um, I know one of the signs that was shown was a, I believe it was a no left turn. You know, between certain hours of the day, we would just want to make sure that whatever signage. Was actually implemented, wouldn't restrict access for any of the residents. So. Um, something more like a no through traffic or something like that would be better than a um risk, a turn restriction. That would prevent the applicants from or from the residents, I mean, from accessing their homes. And then in terms of the T D M measures, um, we had originally asked that the applicant contact M B T A to. Um, consider. Extending the bus service into the site. We know there's been a lot of recent work. To redo bus service in the surrounding area and M B T A has been. Um, trying to improve the efficiencies of their bus service. So we recognize that. Um, that may likely not be able to happen. And I think with the shuttle service that they're talking about. Um, likely does provide a strong um access to public transportation. Um, but we would still recommend that they explore that as an option, um, even though we know that that may not occur. Um, and then we did have a few questions that are related to onsite circulation. Um, with the updated plans that were provided, but I know there may still be some updates coming, so maybe those may be. Held till the next time. Um, a couple of things that I did know as you were going through your presentation. And talking about the options for uh the bicycle, um, separated bicycle facility. Um, and it looked like the separated bicycle facility on the site side. Of the roadway would provide much better alignment. Um, for Gould Street traffic, particularly as it's coming through the intersection of Highland Avenue and crossing onto Hunting Road. Um, so in terms of. If the alignments and and everything that may be a preferred option. Um, it also provides a greater stacking distance. Um, for the site driveway, um, that was one of the items that we noted was the short stacking distance. For vehicles exiting the site driveway, getting out onto Gould Street. Um, so having it on that side of the roadway does provide that benefit. I know that obviously comes with some trade off to the residents who. Um, may want it to be on the the resident's side of the road and does require people to cross the road. To get access, um, if they're coming from the residential neighborhood. Um, to get over, but um, we we do believe that there are some benefits to having it on. The site side of the road in terms of improved alignment of the roadway. Um, and providing a greater distance between the buildings and and the roadway for that stacking distance. And I think that was the big items that I noted. Going through. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those. Adam, you're muted.
Thank you. Uh, uh, that's very helpful. Um. There is, I've got three pages of notes just from you. Uh, fortunately, with what Sean was presenting. You know, they're all slides I can physically grab them. Now. You were very methodical in, you know, on your May twenty seven. Uh, letter to us, which Sean's group at V H B has gone through. Are there? Items that they. Beyond which you have identified. Tonight. Uh, that you're still looking for. Uh, additional solutions for.
Uh, so there there were only a couple of outstanding items in terms of the traffic operation. So. Um, I mentioned at the um, the Highland Avenue and Webster Street, if they can, you know, take another look at the. The timings there and see if there's anything that can be done for the Webster Street uh southbound approach. Um, we're obviously still kind of digesting the the plans and. Looking at what's the the best solution for. Um, for Gould Street and how that gets laid out. Um, there are some minor things related to the traffic monitoring program for, you know, how that would get written. Um. And some onsite circulation comments that we still have that would need to be addressed. Um, but those are are really the big items. Um, that I kind of went through.
So it sounds like there'll be uh uh and a a follow up. Uh, report from you. Once you've had an opportunity to dig a little more detail into some of the more recent. Uh, options or um slides that we've received basically as of Thursday. Um, is that fair? Is that right?
That is correct. Yes, we would anticipate um providing a. An additional comment letter to what they have provided for comments to. Um, just. Basically listing out only what our um outstanding items would be. So we won't. Everything that's adequately addressed, we will leave it as being adequately addressed.
Understood.
Anything outstanding will.
So it's, yeah. Uh, uh, Robert, I'll be with you in a second. So, but it sounds like uh and and uh. Uh, Artie, I see your hand up too. I'll be with you in a in a moment. Uh. So it sounds like at a future point, you know, at a future meeting, which. Maybe uh in August. Um, rather in September. Uh, we'll figure out that date shortly. Uh. That part of that session of this hearing. Will include any. Then outstanding items. That may require additional mitigation. So. I just wanted people in the audience to understand this is not the last time we'll talk about part uh traffic and parking. And also onsite movements and safety. But uh, um, uh, Robert, before I come to you, I am going to go to uh to Artie who had his hand up. First, Artie.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of questions. One is. Um, related to the bike paths, whether it be again, the, you know, east side, west side, east side being the site side. Um, if the bike path is on the site side. Am I correct? And am I correct in assuming that means the bikes have to cross rural street essentially twice? Whereas if they're on the west side, they don't necessarily have to cross rural street at all. And that could either be for Sean or perhaps since uh. Since Rebecca, you you had mentioned something about their, let's call it the preference for traffic flow. Um, but there's a, there's a question either Sean, either for Sean or for Rebecca.
I'm I'm happy to answer. Um, so I, you know, it really depends which direction. You're riding your bike in, right? So if you're, you know, if you're going northbound on Gould, you don't necessarily cross the street, but you know. If you're on the opposite side of the street opposite from the bike lane, you would have to cross to get a bike lane. So you sort of have that challenge regardless of. You know, which side the bike lanes are on, it would just, it would just reverse who has to cross the street.
Well, well, I mean, not 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 exactly, because one of the reasons for these bike lanes, how they're being presented. Is because of, let's call it a commuter biker. Maybe may very well be flowing in the traffic. Where a family or residential Needham biker won't necessarily be flowing in the traffic, they'd be. They'll be, their preference would be then to be on the uh the bike sidewalk, let's call it that. Which means if their preference is to be on the bike sidewalk, the odds, the odds favor. Them not crossing, if the if the bike lane is on the west side, the odds favor them not crossing rural street, not wanting or needing to cross rural street at all. Is that, is that correct in saying?
Yeah, it it it's a good point.
Yeah, I I I think I would add to that, Mr. Crocker, that part of our thought process was. Most of the residential traffic may in fact be headed westerly. Toward Needham Heights and obviously the the main center of Needham. So the thought process was since the residential portion of Gould Street is more on the west side. Perhaps the west side would be a a uh a more viable option. But as as Rebecca rightly points out. Um, it it is probably preferred on the easterly side. For uh site access and and maneuvering. Um, but at that point, I think it's it's um whatever the preference is from.
Yeah, and I can appreciate, I can appreciate. The laws of physics, let's say, and then the laws of the laws of uh of. acreage and and how how traffic flows. So I can appreciate that as an aspect. I just wanted to look at the logical aspect of the flow of the bike bikes itself. Um, is it? Uh, this is on, this is almost a given question. Um, so we are talking. Talking about the the intersections and grading intersections going down towards Highland Ave, heading towards into Newton and so forth. Um, this question is much more of a long term thing. So is it clear to, is it clear to state that even bringing, even even with electric shuttle? Trying to alleviate traffic, is it clear to say that if some point in the future, we can create that bridge? That multimodal pathway over one twenty eight, getting, you know, connecting. You know, everything behind the scenes that that would greatly alleviate traffic on Highland Ave. That would, I think, would perhaps be for Rebecca, with those intersections increase, with 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 those grades increase. If we, if if there was some way of getting the traffic onto a multimodal pathway. That would go from the. Um, railroad interests, railroad tracks going over one twenty eight, one twenty eight, going over the Charles River. High North, 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 North Bridge or whatever it's called. Behind there, would that greatly decrease the traffic on Highland Avenue?
I mean, certainly if there's a way that you can get people over to the west, there'll be some reduction in. Delays and improvements in levels of service from from doing that.
And I do realize um. That that, you know, that the proponents. Uh, Robert, that you were, you were talking, that you had mentioned that in the past. And whether it's ever going to come to be, I do not know. I think a lot. People envision the beauty of that occurring, but whether it's going to happen, I certainly do not know. Um. The other question might be is more perhaps more related to, in this case, for yourself, Sean, and that is that. Um, so so the chair brought up the fact that I think there's a desire to reduce the height of the parking structure. I think the neighborhood is eyeing that, like perhaps uh some of us, some of us are eyeing that. And so, but you but you you stated quite clearly that. That you would not want to do that because, you know, you're already looking to reduce the amount of parking spaces. From the, from these regulations as it is, and if we reduce that, they, that would be below the threshold that you would be comfortable at. Is if we take off a a thing. Level. Now, taking off a level essentially removes roughly ten percent of the parking. If we took off a level, it'd be roughly ten percent of the parking reduced. Now, would that, would that, would your concern be alleviated if we then, if the project itself? Was reduced by ten percent? Because I know there are some, there are some, there's a number of people that think it's slightly oversized. That is, so this is purely, this is purely a mathematical question. If if this project was reduced by ten percent. Which means the requirement is rough, basically roughly ten percent less. Would that alleviate the concern? By us then wanting one level of that parking structure removed?
So I can understand. How the numbers. Fit into the argument to alleviate. This height issue. So I get that aspect of it. I would be. Concerned that that outcome may result in the development being slightly. Under parked and I certainly very comfortable with, you know, the waiver that we're asking for to deviate. From zoning. I think it's appropriate to do that. I think it's the right thing to do that. I I I worry about going. Too far uh with the resultant outcome being that the site becomes under. Park. So there's there's sort of a fine. Line that we want to balance between those two. Things and I and I wouldn't focus on the, you know, the 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 calculation of twelve seventy nine versus the fourteen oh eight, because again, you know, the. There's an aspect of traffic engineering and 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 parking analysis. It it it's a social science, right? It's not science the way other. Science is hard math. Social uh behaviors are are a big part of what drives. All of these numbers and. Calculations and, you know, we we do this and 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 we made this presentation. Uh, specifically to help the board and the public understand that certainly reducing from. Uh, what zoning would suggest is is the right thing to do, but I don't know that I would go, you know, exactly to what that calculation says. I think that's. Uh, what zoning would suggest is is the right thing to do, but I don't know that I would go, you know, exactly to what that calculation says. I think that's cutting it a little too finely.
I I can, I mean, I can appreciate that there's that is the seeming seemingly linear math to it, but then there's the. Then there's actually the the fact of what really happened. Is in in real life. But that being said, if if there was the, if there was a need to eliminate that store, that fifth store, I think is. Perhaps one of this, if the need to eliminate that visual fifth story, that would reduce the parking by roughly ten percent. And then in order to feel more comfortable with the amount of parking, with the amount of potential population of cars needed. Then the rebuilding size would have to be reduced in size for you, for that to fit that comfortability zone. Because you're not, because you're not comfortable reducing the size, reducing that fifth level level now. I think that was clear. You're not. Comfort with that. It would just cut it too close. That means in order for us to eliminate that fifth level, we have to reduce the building size some. Is we have to reduce the requirement for parking. Is is that fair to say? I'm not saying the exact number, but is that a fair statement?
So I I I guess I would need to understand what the, you know, sort of pleasure of the board is in terms of how to balance those. Two things. I think you're you're bringing into play other aspects of the development that kind of go beyond. Traffic engineering, but you know, what what I can say is the parking that's proposed. And on the table, we believe is the right number of parking for what is uh what is presented in the special permit application.
But the but the parking is directly related to the building size. So I mean, I mean, there is some linearity to the building size. And I I get that everything is not isn't exactly one to one, especially since you're looking for a reduction from the requirements. And so I can, I can appreciate that fact. I just want to, I just want to get to the fact that if we're looking to reduce the visual aspect of the parking. We need to find some way to get to the comfortability zone of the available. Or parking to the buildings. That's what I'm, that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at right now, because it's it's clear to, it is clear that we. That in your eyes, we cannot eliminate that fifth story with the current building.
Well, unless there's another way to accommodate the parking. And again, I, you know, I I look to my colleagues, uh, if there's uh. Any amplification in terms of how we might achieve that if the board believes that the height of the parking garage is an issue that we need to contend with moving forward.
Okay. Um, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that's uh that's all I have right now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good. Thanks, Artie. Um, uh, Robert, you had your hand up before. Did you, uh, did you want to, um? You're good. Okay. So I'm going to go to uh G uh Gene, I saw your hand up was next.
Yes, um, I just have a couple of questions um on what was presented. Um, and first of all, I want to commend uh Bull Finch and the Bull Finch team for responding to the comments that have been made by the public. And uh and some of the comments by this board as well. Um, I and. Um, I know we're going to be talking about the site plan data later hearing. But I was um noting that the change in the entrance to TV Place. Um, and as as part of the options, uh, it was mentioned. Uh, that the turning uh wouldn't be quite the same as originally proposed. And I'm very glad to see that the loading dock is going to be access to the north, on the north side of the north building. Directly from TV Place. And I also see that the entrance to the parking garage is both the. To the underground parking and the garage itself is off TV Place. And it uh it concerns me that um if the turning radius at TV Place is to be made uh smaller. Um, as one of the options, um, I don't know that Rebecca would be prepared to respond to that now. Um, but um that might be something to to be looked at. Um, and I did think, i- am I correct that that was uh part of one of the options? Mister Manning is is nodding, yes.
Uh, sorry, I was on mute. That that is part of both of the options, actually, Ms. McKnight. And 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 again, the the right turn was was reflective of a. Assumed full build that amongst other things included over a hundred and twenty thousand square feet of retail. Which we believe with our project in place could never be achieved. And why add that much pavement and roadway for something that, you know? I mean, first and foremost, if Channel Five never moves, they would never need it anyways. And if it ever were to, I'm not so sure that. The uh assumed full build that was supportive of the rezoning could again ever be achieved with this project. In place. But again, I I leave that to to the town and GPI to give us a response on, and I'm sure we can work through those details. Together if if the board is looking for more information on that.
Okay, thank you. Now, I understand better that that was uh to accommodate the full development that might include a redevelopment of the Channel Five site as well. And that perps for your development, you believe it's not, it's not needed. Okay. Um, but but still, I'd appreciate Rebecca's response when she has an opportunity to to think about that. Um, and um also the separated through right lane from Gould to Highland Avenue. Um, that is now proposed that it not to not have that. So it's four lanes rather than five lanes. And it's true that when you think of Gould Street as it is now, and then you think of it being five lanes, it does seem to be very, very much wider. Um, and I can see the reasons for making it only four lanes with the, just the one. Right lane that's both through and right. Um, but I I I would like to get a response from um GPI on whether that will be satisfactory to handle the the traffic. Um, and then I just wanted to understand better the relationship between. The bike lanes, the double bike lanes, uh, which we refer to, I think, as separated bike lanes and the sidewalk. Like suppose the bike lanes are going to be on the west side. Will there also be a sidewalk on the west side of Gould? There would be a separate sidewalk. Plus the two bike lanes. And if, and if the, uh, but there still would be a sidewalk. On the east side of Gould or the site side? Yeah.
Correct.
So no matter what, there'd be a sidewalk on each side of the street, plus the bike lanes. One thing I'm aware of is that um for, is that Needham allows bi- biking on its sidewalks. Um, except in our downtown area where that's you can't bike on the sidewalks. And it typically is children who bike on the sidewalks rather than real serious bikers. Um, but you you're really going to have kind of three lanes uh for biking. Um, I don't know, I I wonder. I wonder if the three, the the two lanes for biking is really needed, just thinking in the. In 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 terms of how much um pavement do you want there? Um, it's just something to think about. Um, and then um. Um, is are all, is all of this, the bike lanes, the sidewalks, the roadway. All going to ultimately be within the layout of the Gould Street right of way? Or is some of it, like suppose the sidewalk and the bike lane is on the site side? Would that simply be a site feature, you know, like like the track around the building? Um, that's just, you know, kind of privately maintained and uh open to the public. Um, I I'd be interested in having an answer to that question today, if at tonight, if possible.
Well, I I think the answer to that question really rests on what GPI feels the recommended site solution is with respect to the Gould Street widening. So if Gould Street uh does in fact uh meet GPI's expectations for four lanes. As you outlined earlier and as one of Sean's options in his presentation. Then that would change the configuration of the width of Gould Street. It is possible that if the bike lanes are in fact consolidated to two. Uh, we don't personally recommend it. We like to isolate sidewalks for pedestrians and north, south or east, west. Bike lanes for bikers. Some bikers tend to go faster than than others. Uh, some bikers have families where the children end up uh operating their bike on the sidewalk. While the parent ends up riding in the bike lane for safety reasons or or other uh reasons. So I I think the ultimate solution will be dependent upon GPI's uh ultimate recommendation. And certainly from our perspective, we're looking to the board and to GPI for its thoughts. And recommendations, and that's why we put up uh three different scenarios. The three scenarios are alternatives that we put up. Were based on community input, community discussions, and of course, input from the June seven planning board uh meeting. So if we can reach consensus on what the recommended uh guide will be, we'll certainly go back and present at the next hearing. The uh final uh ultimate solution as well as showing the right of way uh as it is proposed to be. Did that answer your question?
Um, yeah, you're partly, and I think you're right, that we do want to seek good advice uh from GPI on. What's what's the best layout for this bike path and sidewalk? Um, but whatever the layout ends up being, um, I guess I'll I'll put it out as a positive statement. Um, that bike, the bike lanes and the sidewalk will be within the public way. Of Gould Street ultimately, when the town um alters the layout of Gould Street. Is that your, that's your expectation, right?
As it stands right now, yes, it is possible that the ultimate preferred solution. Again, I I don't want to put words in Rebecca's uh mouth certainly, but I I think if the ultimate solution is a north, south. Uh, or two way bike lane uh and the independent sidewalk of of a five foot width that that we recommend. Uh, if that happens in that format and there is a four lane uh ultimate uh recommended uh layout. Then obviously uh Gould Street would be widened and uh adjusted accordingly to accommodate that. It may very well be that that the recommended solution is the multipurpose path that is on our property. Uh, serve as both sidewalk for community benefit and well, bike lanes on a dual basis. Um, so I I I guess I'd look to Rebecca for some guidance, input, advice, thoughts. Uh, or feedback uh before I I answer anything further. Sorry, I'll put you on the spot.
Okay. Yeah, no, 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 not at all. So, yeah, in terms of um, Gene, I know you asked the question about traffic operations and based on. Um, the analysis that they've put together. And again, we've only looked at the table summarizing the results. We haven't had a chance to go into. The details of of their analysis or anything, but based on the table. It does appear that the traffic operations at Highland and Gould can work with the geometry that they're showing now. With the four lanes coming out. Um, the only thing that the town may want to consider is if. Future development occurs in the the area, then there could be a need for um the the additional lanes. So whether you want to have that in now or whether you would prefer to have the improved bicycle facilities. Um, instead, and you know, use that as a means of trying to keep traffic volumes down by improving your pedestrian and bicycle accommodations. Um, in terms of having it on, if you're going to have the separated bicycle facility. Having it on the site side of the roadway or on the opposite side of the roadway. Um, I think, um, Sean, I don't know if you want to bring up that um. The graphic that you had that showed it on the west side, but you can very clearly see the shift. That is um required in traffic, um, like as you're coming down Gould Street. Um, yeah, so this one, as you're coming down Gould Street from the north, you can see that traffic. Will kind of have to bump out to be able to create that um lane on the the west side of the roadway. And then more importantly, there's already an offset as you're coming through Hunting over to Gould today. And with it on the west side of the roadway, it's going to make that offset even more substantial. Um, so that as cars coming are coming through that intersection, they're really going to be, you know, traveling quite significantly over to the west. Um, it does require stop lines to be set back significantly. Um, which may also change clearance intervals at that intersection. You're going to need longer clearance intervals with the stop lines being set back so far. Um, which could also, you know, create a little bit more delay at the Highland Avenue Gould Street intersection. Um, from the perspective of having it on the opposite side of the street. Um, you can see that there's a much straighter alignment coming southbound down Gould Street. Um, coming from Hunting across a lines uh properly.
Excuse me, Rebecca. Matt, could you zoom in on that so people can see that? It's really hard to see. Sorry about that, Rebecca.
Yeah, no problem.
Make it a little easier for everyone. Try and center it from uh Gould and Highland as well, man. Perfect. Thanks. Go ahead, Rebecca.
Yeah, so coming through from um Hunting across to Gould Street, you can see that that inside lane is actually aligned with the through lane in this case. Um, so there's much better alignment through the area. The other thing that, you know, having it on this side of the road does is it gives you another fifteen feet or so of stacking back into the site. For vehicles coming out of the site. And I know obviously that's a a site benefit as opposed to a community benefit, but there. There is also that benefit there of having that. I know the the big trade off is that it's not on the same side of the street as the neighborhood. Um, we ran into a very similar situation um out in West Springfield on Memorial Avenue where we ended up. Um, creating a widened shoulder, a four foot shoulder. On the opposite side of the road so that if someone was bicycling. On the opposite side of the road from the cycle track, they could continue in that shoulder if they wanted to. So that may be one option for consideration here. I believe the shoulder that shown is two feet. Um, so you you might be able to widen that to a four foot shoulder. So it's can, it's not striped as a bike lane. But it's considered a bike accommodating shoulder so that someone could be in that shoulder and continue straight through. For example, if they want to head down Hunting Road, that way they don't have to cross um to get to the other side of the street. And then cross again to get back to the correct side at the intersection with Highland Avenue.
Okay, well, I look forward to your further comments on on this. So we'll make a decision perhaps on this on our at our next meeting. Thank you.
Yep.
Those were my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, uh, Gene. The chair recognizes Natasha.
Hi, thank you all. Um, I just wanted to to thank um. The HB and the team for, I think, a really thorough traffic report. And Rebecca, thank you for your review. Um, a couple of of questions and that in in the image that we were just looking at, are there any concerns of when it becomes, you know? It goes from four lanes to three lanes to two lanes right at TV, right after TV Place? I I mean, are there any concerns of uh? Kind of it funnels into just two lanes? I I don't know what. I I'm not a traffic engineer, but just it just seems to me that there could be, you know, a situation where there's a huge backup there.
Um, but I I I wonder, Matt, if we can put the image up again and we can kind of walk through this together real quick.
Maybe the percentage slide, uh, Sean, would be best that shows the percentage of. Traffic assumed to be heading on the the northbound side of Gould. In the beginning of the presentation, you had the allocations from locations. Maybe that would be.
This.
Why don't we, why don't we start with the lanes? Because I think it's, I think it's important to understand what the lanes actually do. Um, because the addition of lanes generally, and why why don't we go north to south and then we can circle back and go south to north? The 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 idea is to try, the 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 additional lanes for the most part are to get the turning traffic out of the way. Of the through traffic. So if you start with the premise that Gould Street. Is essentially, you know, a two lane road, one lane in either direction. As you go southbound. Uh, you get a little pocket left turn lane to get into TV Place. And the whole point of that, again, is to get those left turners out of the way of through traffic. Once you get, once you get past TV Place. Uh, really, the 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 prevalent movement from this point to Highland is is left turning to Highland, because of course, those are folks headed. To one twenty eight. So the idea is to have two, you know, you got a left turn lane into our site, which is our primary entrance to five fifty seven Highland. But you've got two through lanes moving forward. And of course, the right hand lane is a shared lane, so you can get into uh. Wing gate. And why don't we slide over so we can continue to the intersection, Matt? Uh, and 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 same thing, we widen to three lanes again to acknowledge that you've got, you've got a left and you've got a through right. So it it's really to keep the turners out of the way compared to what's happening today, which is essentially. A single lane all the way to Highland with a very short left turn lane, really for only about. Three cars to get from Gould onto Highland. And and the problem with that is the, you know, the the volume of left turners that want to turn left. Put aside five fifty seven Highland for a second, the volume of left turners is particularly in the morning that want to go left is. Far longer than the three cars. So what it does is it, it sort of chokes off those people that want to go straight and go. far longer than the three cars. So what it does is it it sort of chokes off those people that want to go straight and go go right. And then in the opposite direction, you start with one lane. And again, uh, where where lanes sort of add and subtract, again, it's to get turners out of the way of that through traffic. So this will actually be far more uh efficient than what's there uh previously. And certainly what we've tried to do is augment that with uh sidewalks, crosswalks, stabilization. That's all, you know, very ADA, pet and bike friendly. And you know, as I mentioned before, you know, we we we've suggested removing some geometry where we think it's just too much road, but of course, we're more than happy to work very closely with GPI to collaborate and figure out what the best solution is, but we think it's something along these lines.
This makes sense. No, I just wanted to make sure that it just was such a drastic, you know, um, change. I just wanted to make sure that that was taken into account. The other piece is when um is uh and and this, I guess, is for Rebecca, when you did a lot of the um analysis before the, and you, this might have been mentioned, but there was so much information that I might have missed it. Um, the, at the corner of Gould and Central, that was a big intersection problem. Um, because everybody was, some people go through Wellesley to get through to this area. Um, especially when there was construction, and I understand that, but still, people like to cut through and not make it all the way down to this exit necessarily. So was this, was there any consideration for any improvements to that particular uh, you know, uh, intersection?
Yeah, so when we did our study, um, we were recommending uh installation of a traffic signal at Central at Gould. Um, it meets the warrants for installation of a traffic signal right now, even without the the site-generated traffic. Um, but with the site traffic, it will definitely meet the the warrants for it. Um, we had, uh, at the time, we were working with GIS information on um the right-of-way. So I know there's been um actual survey that's been conducted to figure out where the right-of-way lines and everything were. Um, but we were showing some potential uh need for acquisition of property. It looks like um with the survey information that there wouldn't be that need, but potentially an easement just to install the the signal pole at that location now. Uh, but this plan that they're showing is consistent with what we were originally proposing. We had a little bit um wider turning radii um than what's being proposed here to be able to accommodate a WB fifty. I believe that they're accommodating a WB forty without any encroachment um onto the opposite um or the opposing traffic lanes. Just slight differences.
I know UB forty, but I don't know W forty.
You know WD forty.
Other than WD forty.
A tractor trailer.
Yeah, so it's a a small tractor trailer.
God, um, that's okay, great. That's great. Okay, so a couple of other questions um that I have here is the the EV charging stations is great. I'm really, really excited about that because I think part of the sustainability part of this project, um, you know, is 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 very strong. And um, the loading dock improvements, I appreciate those as well. Uh, my only question on those, um, it's really helpful to 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 get the front of them uh uh off of Gould. The the only question that I have is, um, have you, have you tested the different trucks coming in at the at the one that's closest to Gould Street, just to make sure that they're not in like um impairing traffic of entering the site because that's one of the entrances. So that was just, if you had done um.
So in 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 indeed, we have, so we've done turning studies to understand how these dock modifications work and 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 to Rebecca's point back at 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 Central and Gould, and again, happy to have a working session and and sort of walk through and.
No, it's okay. I just wanted to bring it up because, you know, it looked like you had changed it, but we didn't see any, you know. But I mean, I I know that there's a lot of information. I just, again, I just check, double checking that it was reviewed with the with the appropriate trucks to make sure that there's not a truck halfway in and halfway out of that, you know. Um, and and then my other comments in general are more about this whole, and maybe it's for the town, but it's this whole sustainability piece of of shuttling people into the site and and not having everyone come in a single car, right? And I think it's I have three comments on that. One is um the, and maybe this is for for the for the development team is the shuttle connection. I know we've done it, Lee, on on some of the other projects, more more recent projects. Has that, has that been successful and how can we improve that? Because I think in general, the reduction of parking to support public transportation, um, you know, and 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 other means of people getting to to the site would be really beneficial to remove the incredible amount of parking that that is required at this moment. So it, has the shuttle connection worked for other projects and and where does it go to and and?
As we, well, we we've conditioned basically our other special permits in the in the New England Business Center in particular um requiring that people either provide an individual shuttle service themselves, which TripAdvisor, I think, did initially. Um, but then they converted, I think, over to the one twenty-eight Business Council. So most of the businesses in the Business Park are members of the one twenty-eight Business Council, which provide shuttle service for their employees in the morning and in the evenings from their place of employment to the train station in in Newton. Um, and so there, as 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 a function of their uh application in front of this board, they're proposing to join that shuttle service and provide that service to the tenants in this in this, in in this facility.
Okay, so I I guess the shuttle connection that we're talking about here, would it be going to Needham Heights or or what is the proposal for that and? Okay, and 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 what is the estimated reduction of cars that you, you know, are there any anticipated ideas for for how this has happened in other areas with the shuttle? I'm just trying to figure out, how do we start reducing parking on the site? If there are opportunities for that and.
So so maybe I can, I can lend it lend an example. Um, Hobbs Brook, if folks are aware of that, that is on the sort of east of Route one twenty-eight in in Wolfam, uh, it's a rather large uh office development. It's actually one of the first Class A office developments on Route twenty, one twenty-eight. It dates back uh to the sixties. But they they have been in the process of upgrading their buildings over the past five to eight years, and they run shuttles to Wolfam commuter rail, which I would say does okay in terms of capturing people. But what is wildly successful is connection to Alewife Red Line Station for reverse commuters. And in particular, younger population that, you know, desires to live in a city environment, but you know, employers want to attract those folks to a one twenty-eight setting, and they need, they need to do this stuff to make that happen. Uh, and this project is going to be no different than that. And, you know, I I believe we can reduce uh parking and traffic by ten to twelve percent. And again, you know, we we presented some slides that were representational, so people could understand reality versus what was used in the traffic study. We did not use those numbers in the traffic study. Again, we're conservative animals and we want to make sure that we get the roadway piece right. And people say, you know, this project uh didn't fix the traffic problems that it was said it was going to. So I, you know, I I make that notation, but I I I will say uh tenants want this and need this. This is how they attract the talent that's going to work in their facility, so.
Yeah, I I think as we move forward, just clarity on that, that would be great. And and then just in general, and this is um again, more for the planning board for the town is the, uh, we 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 had talked about this before, the MBTA station uh bus line goes down Webster and down Central, but it does not go down this area that has that is potentially going to have more employment. And I don't know if with this whole MBTA communities or if there's any discussions that we can have. Uh, I know we can't, you, no one can answer this right now, but any discussions with MBTA about providing bus service to to the site? Because it seems like that would be a kind of a no-brainer, um, seeing that the commercial and industrial area um, you know, doesn't have any public transportation, especially when, you know, it's it's, we're going to be building new things there. So um, those are my only comments, but it's just something for us to keep in mind and see where where that stands.
We have already initiated dialogue, Natasha, with the MBTA to pick up shuttle service uh at this location to basically run down Gould Street. As you know, we have other properties on Gould Street, and those properties have asked for MBTA service. So I think as a joint effort with the uh, with this development and our two other Gould Street projects, as well as uh, three others that are in process on Gould Street, I'm sure there'll be enough of a demand to justify uh an additional MBTA bus running that route.
Right. Thank you so much.
Paul, do you have any comments or questions at this time?
Uh, thank you. Um, I I've mostly just been listening and absorbing, but I just had um one comment about the bike lanes and whether it's on the site side or or the west side of Gould Street. Um, as I'm listening, it sounds like it's anticipated that most of the bicycle traffic is going to be neighborhood traffic, not commuter bicyclists going into the site. And if the bike lanes are on the site side of Gould Street, then the neighborhood bicyclists are going to be competing with the cars that are turning in and out of TV Place and in and out of the other entrance to the project. And so it seems to me that it's a lot safer for the bicyclists if they're on the west side of Gould Street. Um, then the only, the 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 only area where they're crossing cars would be the entrance to Wingate, uh, which 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 is going to be residential, so probably wouldn't have as much the vehicular traffic. So, so I'm thinking it's a lot safer for the bicyclists if they're on the west side of Gould Street. That's really my my only comment.
Thank you. I tend to agree. Thank you very much. I have a couple of uh questions as well. Um Can you bring up the the trip distribution slide, please, Sean, or?
This slide here.
Uh, the next one. Another one, forward, forward.
The the one that showed, Matt, where people would be coming from.
Distribution, no problem. Perfect. Thank you very much. So generally speaking, I want to understand this. I see these numbers and wha- what I'm looking at is the potential for the uh, the neighborhood traffic would be the sixteen percent coming eastbound and westbound at Central and Gould. Uh, and then the, I'm almost ignoring the highway traffic because they don't go through uh, when they're coming off this exit um uh, here on Highland Avenue, they're not going through either neighborhood. They're going directly into the site. So they're not going north of the site on Gould, and they're not going down Hunting. Um, and same is true with Highland Avenue. They're not, that traffic's not, you know, it's bypassing the site. So it's the sev- it's the sixteen, my math right? Fif- is it fifteen? It's fifteen percent, I apologize. Uh, fifteen percent from Central Ave. And then the four percent coming from Newton uh from Kendrick. So that's nineteen percent of the total traffic would be potentially coming through, you know, hu- hunting, you know, up Hunting and that neighborhood and down Gould in that neighborhood. Do I read that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, and then, uh, and you're saying that worst-case scenario, there is roughly um, five thousand or so trips a day to this site, correct?
Based on ITE, yes.
Based on ITE. Okay, so based on ITE, twenty percent would be a thousand. So of the five thousand trips to the site a day per ITE, about a thousand of them would be, uh, a thousand trips, which is five hundred vehicles, would be potentially going through the site. Uh, would be potentially uh going through neighborhoods to get to the site. And then you're also suggesting that ITE standards are uh, are greater than what you anticipate as actual traffic that you're presuming the actual traffic might be closer to two thousand. And I I don't have the slide in front of me. If it's nine hundred or two thousand and six hundred um, two thousand, twenty-one hundred. So you're you're thinking that there is potential, so it's really twenty percent or four hundred trips or two hundred cars based on a twenty-one hundred on a more actual picture. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so this brings me to, that's very helpful. And and I appreciate how difficult it is, given the pandemic on the one hand, and ITV, ITE on the other hand, uh, you know, how we can get to an even more ac- a more accurate picture, representation of traffic. In your proposal here, more recent slides, you've made comparisons to Cambridge. I wonder if compares, I I'd like to know, Robert, you have a number of buildings in Needham, and I think in Well, do you have any in Wells Ave?
Uh, we did, no one any longer, but we did.
So I don't know how long ago you had them in Wells Ave. If you can't get the data there, that's fine, but um, certainly for your Needham properties. Sorry, Jean.
I'm sorry, Steve just walked in with cookies. So I was caught, I couldn't help commenting. Excuse me.
I I I can't blame you, especially if he baked them fresh out of the oven. So Jean, if, uh, sorry, uh, Robert, I mean, I'm just distracted by the cookies. Um, uh, uh, which is a good distraction. But setting that aside, Robert, can you, I'd like you to work with your traffic engineers, and I'd like you to produce for our next meeting a calculation pre-pandemic of what percent of your, of the tenants, employees have go to this, go to your properties through public trans- uh, transportation.
Fine. You you're going to find the numbers to be very small, Adam, because pre-pandemic there was not a high ridership goal on both the one twenty-eight Business Council as well as other modes of transportation. Um, in in addition, the way the the shuttle bus was set up was um, it's not the most inviting uh approach, but what we can give you those numbers, I I think a a good guide would be to look at other towns, Newton, where we have data, Wallfam, where we have data. A little, a little bit from West End, a little bit from Wellesley, and and we can have the HB put together a a summary. The expectation of having the ability to ride in two brand-new electric uh shuttle buses, state-of-the-art um shuttle buses equipped with Wi-Fi, uh, published schedules of of a a running, occurring shuttle bus. Our plan is to internally provide a TDM coordinator for the project, given its size, and the coordinator would uh essentially create a traffic pattern that would cater to the employees. Uh, rough numbers, you can use roughly a thousand or so just for easy math, uh, as well as another five hundred or so in buildings on Gould Street. So we could have the shuttle pick up those buildings as well. And I I think we can come up with a uh inducement to get more people to take advantage of the the public free shuttle service that we provide. Uh, at some of our urban properties downtown, uh, I'd say the ridership is probably uh very close to twelve to fifteen percent of the staff. Uh, the buses make uh six or seven trips per shift, so seven AM to ten AM shift, and then uh, three PM to six PM shift. Uh, each shift runs, you know, generally about a hundred people, so it's a bus of twelve. So, you know, if you do the math, it's about five trips or six.
Is that a municipal bus or is this your own service that you're providing in that property?
No, it's our own service that we provide. It's actually.
We can stop, we can stop sharing this, by the way, this screen. So, Robert, the two electric shuttles that you're talking about here now, are those 128 Business Council shuttles or Bullfinch only?
They would be 557 Highland Ave, Bullfinch only owned and operated shuttles.
And they would run to the site to the green, the end of the green line in Newton on the one hand, and they would also go to the Heights in Needham.
Correct. And it may very well be that one bus runs the green line, one bus, that same bus loops around Needham Heights and then comes back, Needham Heights T Station, then comes back to the site. And the second bus focuses on Newton Run down Highland Ave to Needham Street.
That's that's certainly very helpful.
And I should also add, Adam, if I may, it's also possible we may work together with the 128 Business Council and perhaps we supply the transportation, they supply the drivers. You know, we're in the very preliminary stages of planning. So I think that in the end we'll come up with a program that works for everyone. Lee and I have had numerous discussions over the years with respect to the Business Council busing service and operations. And, you know, reduction of fossil fuels, maybe there's a way for us to provide the actual equipment and the.
I get it, Robert. That's helpful. You gotta forgive me for asking this, but you know, we had to call you in before because you weren't participating anymore in the 128. You weren't contributing financially for your other properties. Tsk tsk. And, you know, we had to call you in. So I have to ask this question. What assurances can you provide the town today that we won't have to bring you in? And that you will fulfill your obligation on an ongoing basis with this traffic demand system, particularly this bus shuttle, whether it's a 557 shuttle or in coordination with the 128 Business Council?
So I won't comment on the fairness of that question because we all know what prompted it. However, with all due respect, we had what was called a pandemic and the pandemic created a very low occupancy value in our buildings during the height.
Robert, the point, the point was that the other landlords were contributing towards it and they were experiencing the same pandemic you were. That's why I have to ask that question.
So I think the honest answer, Adam, is that the way it was structured, the landlords that had occupancy and were taking advantage of the shuttle bus were afforded that ability. We had a vacant building in particular with respect to two of them. Our tenants made the constant conscience decision to implement their work from home strategies. So there was no one in the buildings to transport and the buses, which we carried for probably seven or eight months of the pandemic, just sat in our driveways idling. And there were complaints from budding property owners and neighbors that there was diesel fumes just sitting there to carry no one. So our tenants asked us to discuss with the town, which we did. And as you know, I appeared in front of this board and explained the situation in detail. So I think everyone's fully aware of what happened. Since people began to return to work and the buildings open, which has been for a year or so now, we are in full mode with the 128 Business Council and in fact encourage our tenants to utilize and take advantage of it, even though several buildings are at 50% occupancy and the shuttle buses have run pretty much vacant and unoccupied while they stand in front of our properties.
Thank you. I overall, it does seem like you are, you are providing a robust level of traffic mitigation. And there are some ongoing questions, I think, that, you know, in detail that GPI is going to continue to examine. And yet, you know, I think it is fair to say that you are providing a robust level of, you know, accommodation to, you know, to mitigate these impacts. I do, and I'm sure my colleagues do as well, you know, wonder what is reality going forward because we're going to be in this situation post pandemic that's a new normal, where there is going to be a more significantly more remote work from home. That's going to have a, you know, a reduction in the traffic demand and parking demand. So I'm curious to see how we evolve on that. But at this point, not seeing any other hands up from my colleagues, I would, I'd like to open up to the public to see if they have any comments or questions. And I'd like to, as, you know, if there are any people that are putting their hands up, I will just say in advance that we've I'm grateful, the board is grateful for the public and their participation. We've received to date 47 emails, mostly emails, some letters from members of the public, including the Needham Heights Alliance and another agency that founded the Bay Colony Rail Trail for their comments, which have been very helpful. Those 47 comments have been included in our packet for this meeting and we are maintaining a log of comments as they come in. Just bear in mind that if anyone emails the board, and again, that email address is planning@needhamma.gov on a Thursday prior to a next session of the hearing, it may not be included and we won't have had time to have read it. So, so having said that, please continue to keep your, you know, emails coming or your letters. It's all very helpful. All of us are all reading these thoroughly. As we open to the public, I'd like to remind everyone that this is the second of several sessions of the hearing. In an effort to hear from as many people as possible, we have some basic ground rules. We want to assure, ensure an accurate record. So we ask that when I do call upon you to again clearly state your name and address to address your remarks to the chair and to limit your remarks to three minutes so we can just get through as many people. If you have additional comments, happy to get back to you and to answer any questions afterwards. You know, if there is time, but we are conscious to try and get through as many people as possible. So with that, I'm going to open up the panelist section. We have two comments so far from members of the public. The first that I see on my screen is Maureen Demio. Alex, can you please bring Maureen over to attendee? Maureen, when you're able, if you can show your video and audio, that would be helpful. Perfect. Very good. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Maureen De Mayo. I live on Central Ave, about a mile and a half from the end of Gould Street. I will say that I've lived in the Heights section of Needham for the last 33 years. My husband and I bought an old fixer-upper with a big, beautiful yard, which we have raised our four children in. Sadly, everywhere I walk in the Heights District in particular, I see one house being torn down and either two or three townhouses are being built. A budding my own backyard, three houses were purchased and five houses were built. Two houses over from my house, one house was torn down and two townhouses were built into every square inch of the lot. Everywhere I see one small home, much like the house my husband and I were lucky enough to buy when we were first married, being torn down and another monstrosity being built. I sadly believe my own children will likely not be able to afford to live in this town themselves. But I'm here today to discuss the monstrosity that's being asked to be built in the Heights District in the former Muzzy Ford site. Let me first say that I have followed this project from the beginning and have followed the data and all of the presentations. My concerns about this 1.1 million square foot project are the following. Number one, traffic getting on and off the Highland Ave exit. I heard, just heard Adam say that he's not concerned about the exit traffic. I'm concerned about it. I get on and off that exit almost every day. Traffic leading to the intersection of Cedar and Central Ave, which is the Elliot School, which I believe even one of the previous presentations, you stated to be an additional 80 cars a day. Traffic feeding onto the side streets around the property. Did I mention traffic? The initial presentation that I watched some months ago about rezoning the property, including, excuse me, included an informational video as if you were driving down Chestnut Street from Dover. The presenter spoke about the size of the buildings as you enter and exit the town. And the presenter spoke about how these building sizes matched so that they flowed naturally. This is the very crux of my argument against this property. You cannot compare the business district across 128 to this neighborhood district. Please don't continue the business district across 128 and down Highland Ave. If this million square foot plus project is approved, it becomes the next argument for the next building down Highland Ave, which becomes then the next three-story building. You have an opportunity to change the trajectory for the Heights section of Needham for many, many years to come by reducing the size of this project. Please don't let this neighborhood down. The last point I want to make is that my husband is a scientist and I would question your 14 to 15% of scientists who work from home. The nature of that work does not allow it. Additionally, while it is true that COVID has forced many companies to work from home, many of my friends are actually being asked to go back to work now. And my last comment is, I'd like to add that it's upsetting to me that given that this is a public meeting, I'm unable to see how many residents have attended this meeting tonight. I would say to people who have sat through this meeting and the others like I have, that if you're a Needham resident and you're here, please raise your hand and speak up so the planning board knows what your concerns are. Otherwise, no one but the planning board and the Bullfinch group knows you're even here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Maureen. And for those wondering, we have a total of 31 members from the public. I appreciate you, you know, you raising that. The challenge for us is the town license requires these meetings by Zoom, I think, to be conducted through a webinar format or a certain type of a format. I've been an advocate like you to actually have, you know, to be able to go right into the meeting and that all members of the public would be able to, you know, have the same view as you and I have at this moment as an attendee. However, the license that the town has with Zoom prohibits that for these type of meetings. So I understand the comment. And thank you very much for speaking up. I'd now like to recognize Emily Pick. Alex, if you're able to bring Emily over, that would be helpful. Emily, we cannot hear you. You are muted.
Hi, my name is Emily Pick. Can you hear me?
We can. And your address, please.
12 Mills Road.
Thank you very much.
I, in addition to the comments of the first person reiterating the nature of the residential neighborhood that we have, I'm also very, very concerned that in the traffic analysis that was presented tonight, there was absolutely no discussion of some of the side streets that have, we've earlier referred to as the cut through neighborhoods. Specifically my street, Mills Road, but also Utica, which is a parallel. I've heard a lot about what the, you know, the options are to adjust hunting, the Hunting and Gould intersection, which is an absolutely treacherous intersection as it stands today. But I would really like to see additional traffic mitigation measures put in place for Mills Road specifically, and if residents of Utica care to comment, but it really impacts everyone on Mills Road, Davenport Road, Utica Road, as well as Sacum that flows into Hunting. And I've heard zero reference to us. So that is my primary feedback. In addition to what has been said about traffic, traffic, traffic and more traffic, as well as contingency plans about what happens to traffic as additional facilities get built and adjusted in the Northland Project, as well as everything that could be happening on Highland as you head into town, as there will be further development that I'm very concerned about. So that what has been presented still doesn't address our side streets and our neighborhood and really candidly to protect our neighborhoods as they stand today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There may be, you know, a point of clarity, just as I'm thinking through it. You know, we had, I was asking what the distribution of traffic was like through the traffic to understand that. The police chief Schlittler had commented on that already. It was something that has been brought up. It was brought up by GPI as well as our peer reviewer. And our, and the applicant is, you know, can speak to their own measures, but they are proposing measures as the police department and GPI are encouraging through signage and through improvements of major intersection points that would intend to mitigate that through traffic and prohibit it except for the neighbors. But your point is valid and thank you for speaking up. I'd like to now recognize, Alex, if you can bring over Ari Zaketsky. Ari, we can see you and your friend there, but we can't, we can't hear you.
All right. Do you hear us now?
We can. Thank you.
Okay. My friend is my daughter and she's going to speak tonight.
All right. Hi, my name is Eva Zasipitsky. I live at 12 Mills Road and I'm 14 years old. Over the years, traffic on Highland has become increasingly worse and cars are cutting through our neighborhoods at high speed. There are lots of little kids in my neighborhood and I'm always worried someone will be hit. I have a friend who lives on the other side of Highland and crossing is a real challenge. With two lanes of traffic going each way, it's almost impossible to get across. I feel like our neighborhood has been divided in two. The only safe way to cross is to cross at the light, which isn't very safe either. This project will make traffic a lot worse. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Eva. That was very well said. And I note your age because it's important that you're starting at this point in your life to participate in the public process. We appreciate your observations and thanks for staying up, especially on the summer night.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I try to teach my son the same lesson of public service. Next, we have Natalie with no last name. Natalie, if you could turn on your video and audio, we had you audio for a second and then we lost it.
So I have my kids with me. We are on 21, we're on 21 Utica Road and I have huge concern about the scale of this project. One. One, one of the main issue that has been brought up continuously is traffic. I mean, we're talking about a project. That is going from a base sound of eight hundred cars to five thousand cars. That's a magnitude of five times. Think about one congestion that's on my street that's affecting my little one where like, you know, they're go, they're, they're, you can see them, you can just see them right now. They're like three and five. And I just have to walk out once they set onto a road. So I can imagine how many cars are gonna be possibly passing by my street. And basically affecting my little kids who don't have the ability to like kind of really be, I, I'm sorry, they're in the background, but just. You know, just so that they wouldn't get run over. Um, never mind, kind of like the carbon emission that's gonna like cause like asthma. Like with the amount of cars that's gonna be coming into our neighborhood. So I have really, really huge concern about the scale of this project and whether or not it's appropriate for our neighborhood. Um, my family has been here for a number of years. Um, I think collectively over thirty years, so. Um, this is something that's super important to us and we really don't want that to change. But I'm, I have, again, reiterating that I have huge concern about the scale of this project because I do not think it's appropriate. I don't think, I, I don't think there's enough, you know, community member weighing in about like the impact of it. I'm really concerned about asthma. I'm really concerned about traffic. I'm really concerned about the fact that, you know, these cars are passing through like during rush hour and basically hitting my kids.
That's not something any of us want. Thank you for, you know, for raising that.
If you wanna see them, Audrey, you wanna say something about the cars that used to be coming in up and down the street? Yeah, and then do you see a lot of cars going up and down the street? And are you concerned about it? Yeah, so there they are. I mean, they, these are, these are my little ones that I'm concerned about, like with all the cars coming through and, you know, the. There's like real consequences to, um, you know, that's not being addressed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for participating. I'd now like to recognize Henry Reagan. Uh, Alex, if you can please bring over uh Henry Reagan. Henry, we cannot see you or hear you.
I'm very sorry, Mr. Chairman, I didn't have the um, the icons were not up.
No problem, we can hear you and see you now. Thank you.
Um, Henry Reagan, twenty five Bennington Street, um, feeling old right now because I have grandchildren that age who. Who had just gone, but um, I'd like to echo the sentiments that were were spoken already. About both the scale and the traffic. I think that there is a compromise that can be made on the scale that will. Fall within zoning regulations and will also mitigate some of the traffic questions. Um, I do have a few questions that I'll ask and then I'll, I'll stop talking and and listen to the answers. Um, one is that, um, and and kudos to the developer for the number of community meetings that they have had. Um, I've been involved with this process here and in my home neighborhood in Boston. And I've never seen a developer have this many meetings with a community, so I congratulate them for that. Um, now you know something's coming when you say, when you set off with something that nice, I guess, but. It's this developer's been speaking, his, his people have been speaking with a great deal of certainty about this project. And yet I remember him saying during one of the meetings that he doesn't know who the tenants are yet, in fact, hasn't hired a real estate. Broker or rental broker, whatever the correct term would be. Um, so we don't know and. Different tenants are gonna produce different results in terms of parking and traffic. It, some, some tenants are gonna have vendors and customers visiting them, which will add to traffic. Some won't. So without knowing that, I think we're, we're speaking with a little bit too much certainty. Uh, secondly, um, respectfully, Mr. Chairman, I, I do have to agree with Mr. Mayo and disagree about. I do think that there is a big impact of the amount of traffic that will come off of Route one twenty eight uh that was referred to. Um, I would like to, one, my question to um, be about, you know, I'm losing the, the number of what X is. You know, so what two thirds of X is, what that number would actually be coming off of one twenty eight in a, in a given day. And um, the third question is really to the board and I'm not sure, I, I don't mean to put the onus because I'm not, I'm not sure anyone really knows this yet. But if we were to run MBTA bus service to this site. Would that be impacted by the governor's proposal of within a half a mile? Um, changing zoning to allow for housing that that Ms. McKnight made reference to early in the meeting. I had, it's not being just a leading question. I have no idea. It's just a thought that came to me and thank you for the time.
What, what was that last question again, Henry, please?
And in other words, the, the governors, as I understand the MBTA regulation that the governor's proposing is within a half a mile. Of MBTA routes that the zoning would be changed. There was some discussion a little bit earlier that, that there'll be MBT, that it's possibility of having MBTA service to the old Muzzy site. Um, would that be impact? Would that have any tie in to the governor's proposal? Does that question make sense, Adamo?
I, 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 I think so. Jean is very eager with her.
Would you, yes, would, would, if, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like me to answer that question, I can. Um, the guidelines that were put out by the Department of Housing and Community Development to implement the new law. Um, refer only to areas within a half mile of, of stations. Now, there can be such a thing as a bus station, but we don't have one in Needham. Um, but what we have are the four train stations. The um, guy, there have been many, many comments on these draft guidelines this month. Um, the Department of Housing and Community Development is expected to issue the final guidelines. We won't know the full answer to your question until we see those final guidelines. So uh, keep, keep tuned to that issue as you see it in. And the Housing Plan Working Group of our town on which I serve as co-chair. Uh, is definitely going to be focused on that this month and at its meeting later in. In uh, July. Uh, Lee, is it July twenty eighth?
Yes, that's correct, July twenty eighth.
July twenty eighth, Housing Plan Working Group, and we'll be talking about that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, and uh, Henry, thank you uh for the questions. Uh, and um, and for clear, uh, for clarity on, as we bring over Ben Daniels. I wasn't disregarding the impact that traffic or two thirds or really, I think it's close to eighty one percent. Of traffic that would be coming off of one twenty eight. I was just. Uh, understanding the traffic pattern that that traffic, I think Sean from one twenty eight. Itself doesn't go through Gould and Hunting and those neighborhoods to get to the site. They go directly, you know, that distribution is based on those vehicles coming off of. The Highland Avenue uh uh exit and then going proceeding directly to the site. So Ben Daniels, if we could. Uh, um, uh, see you and if you could unmute yourself. That uh would be helpful if we could have your uh address as well for the record.
Hi, can you? It's saying unable to acquire camera. Can you see me or hear me?
We can hear you, we can't see you. It's okay.
My, it says my video.
No, we lost you.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now, fine.
You, you've seen me in the past. You guys can maybe remember what I look like. Um, or you'll see me in the future. Um, I'm, I live at five Satcham Road directly across from the site. Right at the end of Satcham Road in the little white cape on the left. A couple of quick points. I'll try to be fast. First, regarding the traffic, I remember at the beginning, the. Kind of remember the person from Bull Finch was saying about the U-turns on Satcham Road. The reason's really simple. When the state put up a no U-turn sign at the corner of Hunting and Highland about ten years ago, that's when it all started. And people are making U-turns there or they're going through Mill or Utica or going through Satchin and David. But that's the, that's where it all came from is when that no U-turn sign went up. For a while, someone was taking it down, wasn't me, but somebody in the neighborhood was taking it down. I think they finally gave up and the state kept putting them back up again. Um, second, Mike, mainly it's about the traffic and about the cut through traffic and I've heard. You know, what everybody says, but this reminds me, I think some other people attending are old enough to remember what we were fed back in the early nineteen eighties about the big dig. And how it would alleviate everything and everything would be this panacea of traffic in Boston. Well, it wasn't. And so I, it's kind of like, I feel a little deja vu listening to this. And, you know, I'm not accusing anybody of saying anything, saying we're gonna end up like Boston, but a lot of times these. You know, platitudes and all these great, you know, estimates, when they don't come out to work. People kind of say, well, I guess we got that one wrong and then there's no one to ever be found when the problem occurs. You know, and I guess what I would say is that I, I hope that Bull Finch would commit to keeping this an ongoing study because. Like the other person said, we don't know who's gonna, they don't know who's gonna be the tenants and they don't know what the traffic is gonna be. I think all these ideas about bicycles, Needham is not gonna turn into Amsterdam. And not everybody is gonna commute on bicycles. As a matter of fact, I think almost nobody will. Certainly, nobody will in January. Maybe people will in June. But that hopefully, um, Bull Finch will continue to look at the traffic issue. And will be willing to take mitigating steps in the future if they find out that a lot of these initial assumptions. May not be as accurate as um we would all like. And one other point just about, this is a personal one about my street. My end of Satcham is a private street which foolishly somehow connects two public roads. And is used as a major cut through by trucks, but unlike the other streets. The only people responsible for maintaining Satcham are the people who live on Satcham and. Despite some inquiries to the town about making Satcham a public road, which it should be. But the other side of Satcham is, it really has ingenuity where maybe the, the good folks from Bull Finch could give us a hand with that because. This is a street that's gonna be used very heavily, no matter what anybody thinks is a way to turn around because it's, it's one way that a truck can make a turnaround. Um, you know, they go down Satch and then down David and back out to Hunting. But anyway, I, I look forward to one last, one, let's say, one last, last point. I hope that the next meeting can be in a hybrid form because I think that there is something about seeing people in person in the last meeting. That we had the only one representative from Bull Finch attended. I would request. That if the meeting is in hybrid form, that it is in hybrid form, that, that the principals from Bull Finch all attend in person. So that we can actually meet them and see them. And um, I think that's important. If they're gonna, you know, we're all gonna be neighbors together. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Everybody have a good night.
Thank you very much. I'd now like to recognize uh Stephen Sussman. Uh, Alex, if you can please bring over uh Stephen Sussman.
Hi.
Hi, thank you. We can see you and hear you.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, I was late to the meeting. I didn't get home till um, later, so if I'm. Missing some things, I'm not surprised, but in my time I've been here, I picked up on three things. Uh, the public trans shuttles, as wonderful as they sound. Nobody takes a shuttle unless there isn't parking. Now picture, you live in the South End of Boston, you're gonna get, walk to the T. You're gonna take your, the T over to South Station. You're gonna take the commuter rail. And then you're gonna pick up with the shuttle. What's your timing? If you owned a car and you lived in the South End, you'd pop in that car and you'd drive out this way. So that's my first thought. No one's gonna use the shuttle. Because there's parking, so maybe what Artie was saying, li- limit the parking, which would limit the size of this complex. Uh, the police presence and the signs in the cut through, that's a joke. Come on. People don't work nine to five. Peep, some people work six to four. Some people work eleven to eight. So what are they gonna do? They're gonna sit there all day? That's ridiculous. That's not gonna happen. I agree with Ben, it's not a biking town. Those cute little signs we have in Needham, but Needham is a biking community. Forget it. It's, no one's biking there. I live on thirty Davenport Road. Sorry, forgot to say that. I've been here many, many years and my five children who went to the Elliot School. I never let them walk across Highland Ave at Highland or Gould, yet alone bike. Highland to Gould, from Webster to Gould, that's Needham's little personal drag strip. People fly, fly, and it's only gonna be exasperated by this incredibly ridiculous project that the state put in. With the four lanes now. The bike lanes on that stretch of war, a road are ridiculous. They go nowhere. No one, there's gonna be no community biking down Gould Street. Nobody's walking that way. So that's a lot of attention on something that's not gonna happen. The trip distribution, I was looking uh at the data, it's from two twelve to two sixteen. That's ten to six years ago. Uh, the thirty two percent arriving on one twenty eight on the Highland Ave exit is delusional. Anybody who's coming from the South Shore is gonna try. They're gonna try by Saint Sebs. They're gonna try by Great Plain Ave. They're gonna try. And on the, leaving the site, they're gonna go right to that beautiful new Kendrick exit and take. One twenty eight to there. I kick myself every time I get on one twenty eight going south. I said, I should have gone by Saint, Saint Sebs. And everybody wants to be clever, myself including finding our own little shortcuts, you know, that's my short. So all the side streets will be impacted. The whole town will be impacted. Great Plain Ave, if you're coming from west, Route nine, you're coming up Cedar Street, you're coming up by May, Mass Bay College. I've tell you, I do that one too. They're all over. And I think uh, our first speaker. Mentioned the Cedar Street Central. Uh, in- intersection where the crossing guard who's been there forever and still has not. It does the best she can, let's put it that way. It's a mess. It's, it's just. I think the turd, thirty two percent coming on one twenty eight to the hunt, to the Highland Ave exit. Is delusional. It's not gonna happen. And I respect the, the traffic study, but. And I wrote this to Mr. Manning way back in April when I had some correspondence with him. I said, it, it's not a. Rational decision when you're in traffic. Your GPS might say, I'll get there faster if I sit this out, but that's like sitting in a train. In the station and it's not moving. Nobody can stomach that. No one likes that. They're always gonna wanna keep moving. And the way they're gonna keep moving is they're gonna get off and hit that uh Greendale Ave. And they're gonna hit Hunting Ave and come up that way. And I'm sorry, if the folks from Bull Finch don't know what I'm talking about the ro, in terms of these roads, that is the problem. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sussman. Um, Holly Shavernair, uh, Alex, if you could please bring Holly over.
How was it? How was my last statement?
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Holly.
I just wanna say, I do wanna start with saying I do appreciate everything that Bull Finch Group has been doing to meet with the community. And take our thoughts into this project. I want to say I really appreciated what Artie added in his conversation about. Decreasing the parking and decreasing the size. I see the merits of this project. I believe it. Is worth doing. I just think that the current size is too large for the number of reasons everyone else has said. And to get it down to a one point oh FAR. Would be a more reasonable size for human scale of our neighborhood, in my personal opinion. So I've been talking to a lot of my constituents in Precinct J about this. And many of them are in agreement that at the one point two five. The five hundred thousand square feet for the building and six hundred thousand square feet for parking. Is just too large of a project when it's divided against these residential houses. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Uh, I'd now like to bring over our last uh member from the public. Uh, it's nine fifty six and we still have uh other items on our agenda. So um. If you could please bring over Ashley. if you could please bring over Ashley Shufill, that would be helpful. And here, we see if you could say your name and address for the record, please.
Yep, Ashley Shifely, fifty-two Greendale. Just a couple of quick comments. I share, I won't repeat a lot of the concerns about the scale of the project. I share the concerns that previous speakers um addressed with respect to the scale, particularly of the height of um the parking structure and and just generally the um the scale of the project in what is essentially a residential neighborhood. Two main concerns with the subject matter of this meeting. Making sure that our neighborhood in the Heights stays safe for um for families, for seniors, for bicyclists, for differently abled folks. In terms of traffic flow, we need to keep the speeds on Gould Street and Highland down, you know. Steve Sussman brought up how fast people go here already. If there's increased traffic, um it will become a very, very dangerous situation for the people living here. There are you know, a lot of people who drive by on Highland don't realize that there are a lot of neighborhoods all along Highland here. And there are a lot of, a lot of young people living there. So we we need to keep speeds down. There will inevitably in be increased pollution, which is very worrisome. And these intersections will become, you know, if without proper mitigation measures, very dangerous for pedestrians and bicyclists. So safety is is the number one concern, safety of of neighborhood, you know, families and and other folks. Second concern is making sure that this project is compat compatible with the residential uses that essentially surround it. We need to make sure that the traffic caused by this project doesn't make our neighborhood a cars only zone like Route Nine. And I think, you know, one thing I'll say is that the sidewalk level bike lanes do a lot towards that. I think that improving the sidewalk infrastructure, improving the bicycle infrastructure is a good thing and a good. You know, we had, we had talks with the developer and and they were responsive on that. And I I do appreciate that. And I think that's a step in the right direction. There are, you know, more steps that could be taken to make sure that this is, this remains accessible to pedestrians and to bicyclists and to families and make sure that these amenities that we're talking about, things like a pickleball court, the walking path at the site, restaurants, those aren't going to help, those aren't going to be amenities for the community there if they're not accessible to the community. They're only going to be amenities for the tenants at at the site. So I just want to make sure that the heights is is, you know, being considered here. And the safety of our neighborhoods is is really paramount. And I I am relying on the planning board to make sure that, you know, that that's taken into account.
Thank you very much. Uh, I see uh that we have one more uh uh hand up, Dina Krieger. That will be our last for three minutes. So if we can bring Dina over, that will be it. If there ends in one else that has their hands up at that time, we'll have to recognize them in the future.
Hi, Derek. Can you hear me?
We can, and we can see you, Dina. Your address for the record, please.
Great. Uh, Dina Krieger, seven Utica Road. Um, apologies, I did raise my hand uh late. Um, thank you for including me. I'm at seven Utica Road. I'm right on the corner of Utica and Highland, the White House. Right there on the corner across from Wingate, and I just really wanted to throw my two cents out there. I just feel like I'd be remiss if I didn't. I'm um equally as concerned about the scale of the project. Um, it just seems, it just seems so massive. It's hard to wrap my head around it. Being right across the street from it and being here uh for twenty plus years in the neighborhood. I work from home. Again, I'm in the corner. I see uh everything all day long. It is not an exaggeration when folks are talking about the drag racing, the Speedway. Um, it's it's unbelievable. There's a certain part um when the light is green, where people just floor it down Highland. I'm also concerned about the safety of kids in my neighborhood. There are way more kids here than ever before. My son is twenty-three and and off on his own, off on the payroll and and so I'm not worried about him, but um there are a ton of kids right here on Utica and the surrounding streets, Mills and Satcham. And I'm worried about their safety. The cut through um is absolutely not an exaggeration. There are just cars all day long that not only cut through down to Utica to get back out to Hunting, but also turn around in our driveway. They pull over um on the sidewalk right in front of my house and yak on their cell phones and and do what they need to do, which I guess is better than than driving while talking, but it is really an active area for folks that don't live here. So I just wanted to throw my two cents in. I'm I'm concerned. I'm I'm excited for what's coming down the pike. Um, I'm all for progress, but I really am concerned about the scale um that you guys are looking to um do. And I would respectfully request that um you really uh listen to what uh the neighbors here in the Heights are saying and um I for one uh will throw my hat out there. I'm happy to help in any way I can. But hopefully we can take care of the scale, not make it so massive and figure out what we're gonna do about cut through traffic, uh the additional traffic and the safety of the kids in the area. Thanks. Appreciate the time.
Thank you very much, Dina. I appreciate your participation tonight. It is uh ten oh four. We still have some other items on our agenda. Uh, Mr. Slager, Mr. Sullivan.
Mr. Manning, Mr. Chair, if I may, if I may. We've, we've had a lot of comments from the public right now. I think it's only fair and only right, actually, that that whoever on the planning board would like to comment would like to comment as well. That way we is we have all these people here paying attention now. I think we should, anyone on the planning board that would like to respond, should every point should have a chance to respond and kind to some of the comments being made since since all the people here now.
I uh I appreciate that already. Uh, and then after that, I'll entertain a motion to continue the hearing to September the seventh. Other than already, is there anyone else that wishes to to speak in response to the public comments? I don't see anyone else as well. Okay, so uh, oh, Paul, so Paul, come to you and Natasha.
I just.
And Paul, after after already, already had his.
Sure. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I I do think it was the right thing to do. I I think it is important that we've that see, one thing that we've talked about or I've tried to talk about in town is the balance of what's going on. And as far as with the business and the residential communities, as far as what we're doing. And so we do have to look at this as far as what is the balance. Now, one thing is certainly true, and I have, and I have to actually apologize. I'll guess I'll call it the U Utica, Davenport, Satchin neighborhood type of thing because, I mean, we've been talking about the Noanet neighborhood. What's the cut through there? I don't remember as much conversations going on about that, but the Utica neighborhood is, I mean, I know it, I know it well. I've actually, I must admit, I've actually cut through there once myself. I know it well because I grew up on Spring Road heading towards the Heights, so I know that area fairly well. And it is absolutely true that that neighborhood, I mean, every neighborhood, every neighborhood transitions to a certain extent. But that neighborhood has transitioned quite a bit, and there are an awful lot of kids there. And we have, we truly have not thought about the impact on that neighborhood and what's going on. Um, and and what the size of this project does mean. Now, is something gonna happen there? Yes, Bull Finch, you guys have done a fantastic job reaching out to the neighborhood. You act, you absolutely have. There's no question about that. But I am concerned about the balance of what's occurring at this point. You know, talk about balance. Is it, is it too big, what's going on? Um, there was the talk about what's what's on the other side of one twenty-eight. Well, that's what that is. This isn't that side of one twenty-eight. This is the neighborhood side of one twenty-eight, but not remembering the fact that Riverside and there is a community over there as well. So we have to always have to consider that. But, you know, we're not looking for this side of one twenty-eight. Well, I'm not looking for this one, this side of one twenty-eight to be, you know, to be to be symmetrical. I'm not looking for symmetry. I'm looking for the balance of this side of one one twenty-eight to be balanced with the community, the residential part itself. And I actually, again, apologize because I was truly out of sight, out of mind. I would, my brain was just so much on Noanet, and it wasn't so much on the Utica. That is a neighborhood, just like any other neighborhood in town. Exactly. Lots of kids and lots of potential hazards, there's traffic going through. I do not know what can be done to mitigate that. I I truly don't. Besides reduce the tweet, besides reducing the traffic, reducing the possibility, I don't know what else can be done. But if I can reduce the possibility of um of less traffic, then I'm happy to do that and advocate for that because I do think I do have some concerns as far as the size of this project and and the impact and visually the impact and traffic impact on the side of one twenty-eight. And that's all, Mr. Chair, and thank you.
Thanks, Artie. Paul, and then Natasha will come to you.
No, I just um I'm going to um reiterate what what Artie said. I want to thank the neighbors who spoke. They, they have brought to our attention um a problem or an issue that we were not focused on, which is uh the traffic, the traffic issues on on the other side of Highland Avenue in the Mill, Mill Road, the Utica Road, Satcham Road area. We had been focusing on the, on the side streets off of off of Gould Street. I want to encourage the neighbors to to continue to show up at these hearings and to continue to give us their feedback in person as well as sending us their emails and their letters. We are reading those. And and we do, we do need to get those comments so that we have the the whole picture of what the neighbors' concerns are. And I, I I just wanted to say that on the record. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Paul. Natasha.
And yes, I just, and this is quick just because I feel the same way that I mean, we were just Paul just said. Is that we appreciate um the community comments. We appreciate also what Bull Finch has done with all these community meetings. And we take um all of those comments really seriously and we will take them into account as we're um reviewing this proposal. So so thank you all.
Thank you, Natasha. Uh, Jean, uh, do you have anything else that you want to say in response to what you've heard from the public at this time? Okay, thank you very much. Can I please have a motion to uh continue the hearing? Uh, Lee, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe it's September the seventh. And then we have to walk at time. Do you have a recommendation once you confirm that date?
Yes, I think we, I think we discussed um seven, starting at seven oh five um on September the seventh.
Okay.
So moved.
So we have a motion uh to continue the hearing to September the seventh at seven P M. Uh, do I have a second?
Uh, yeah, so we're going to start this hearing it's at seven o'clock, which will mean.
No, I suggested seven oh five.
Seven oh five. So it sounds like we'll be starting our meeting probably then at six forty-five?
No, at seven.
Only five minutes before we start the hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. Just, just clarify. Thank you.
Thanks for the clarification.
I second the motion.
Have a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, just for clarification, this is gonna be a hybrid format? Is that the?
Uh, yes, correct.
Okay.
And the low, that we will publish the location.
It will be a town hall.
We.
At Powers Hall.
Very good. So it will be at 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 Powers Hall. Um, and again, uh, Mr. Slater, we encourage you in addition to all members of your team, as you are able, you know, to attend uh in person at uh, you know, that would certainly be our goal as well. Uh, hearing no other discussion, I'll come to the vote. Artie, uh, Paul Albert.
Hi.
Artie Crocker.
Hi.
Natasha Stata.
Hi.
Jean McKnight.
Hi.
And the chair is I. We are continued. Thank you, everybody. Really forward to seeing in September as well as receiving a revised uh site plan. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Good evening.
Evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item on our agenda is a review of the brewery zoning uh uh for town meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, I need to recuse myself from the discussion of the brew breweries uh rec proposals. Because um I understand that it's um to be considered that uh three of our four industrial zones would uh be, would be discussed as a possible site for brew pubs and or breweries. And I live across the street um from, I think, what is the largest of these industrial zones. And um I talked it over with town council. It seemed that the, you know, matter of public interest that affects more than ten percent of the population would not necessarily apply um to that issue of um breweries in these particular small, relatively small zones. I also serve on the Board of Directors of the Rosemary Ridge condominium, hundred and five unit condominium. So in that capacity also, um, I would be concerned about the effect of brew pubs and breweries across the street from the condominium. So um, for that reason, I am choosing to recuse myself from this discussion. And if it continues um to be the recommendation that the industrial zones will be considered, I will recuse myself from the entire process, including the later hearing and the presentation to town meeting. So at this time, I appreciate if if I could be moved to be an attendee. And if there's anything that comes after this part of our meeting that I should rejoin for, please bring me back.
Thank you very much, Jean. Uh, so Alex will uh move Jean over to an attendee. And uh just thinking this through for a second, uh, Alex, I'm not sure if you're able to bring up the latest and then share a screen on the latest. Uh, Lee, do you want to walk us through and do we need the zoning up yet? How would you like to move this item?
Uh, if if the board has their packets, we could do it that way, or Alex could bring up the draft. The um, the draft, I think, that's in front of you is is essentially the proposal that we prepared um to go forward with at town meeting um and pull back on because the Sleppen need needed to work out their licensing um component of this proposal. Um, it, the Chris Heap had um suggested a couple minor modifications in the definition of micro brewery. But essentially, um, the proposal remains the same as we had worked it up for town meeting. When we pulled it back to allow the Sleppen to develop the um liquor license policy. So essentially, it creates, you know, the definition for brew pub and for micro brewery. Um, and then it calls out the zoning districts where those uses would be allowed. Um, and so we had essentially allowed, um, I think, a brew pub in the business district, the Chestnut Street Business District, Center Business District and Avery Square Business District, um, all by special permit. And within this, and within the Chestnut Street Business District, um, we had limited it to that portion of Chestnut Street, which was south of um of Keith Place. Um, and then we do you want me to go through it at at this level of detail, Adam?
Yes, I think that's helpful.
Okay, and then um as it relates to the micro brewery use, um, we um allowed it in the um Industrial One District. Um, and in the New England Business Center District, we allowed both the brew prob use and um the uh micro brewery use provided that it was located um south of um south and west of sec- of Second Avenue to pull it away from the residential neighborhood. And then we allowed it in the um, I think, High Highland Commercial one twenty-eight district, which runs along both sides of one twenty-eight from the highway to the Needham. Which runs along both sides of one twenty eight from the highway to the Needham, to the Newton Town Line. Um, in that, in that instance, we allowed it um, on both a brew pub and a micro brewery. On both sides of Highland Avenue. Um, in this case, it needed to be located. Um, west of Second Avenue, again, to pull it away from the neighborhood. Um, district at that end, which included, you know, the Highland Terrace and the Riverside. Um, street neighborhood. Um, and then we allowed a micro brewery and a brew pub use in um, mixed use one twenty eight. Again, by special permit. And in Highway Commercial, uh, One District, we allowed both a brew pub and a micro brewery um, by special permit.
So, there was considerable discussion previously, if I recall. Um, about whether or not to include. The industrial district for either brew pub or a micro brewery. And. Um. Ultimately, the board found uh, not to include the industrial district. Although we have been, um, we received a, a correspondence, which is also in our packet very recently from. Uh, Lou Wolfson, who owns uh, property in um, on Crescent Street. And with, on Crescent uh, Road, thanks, um, Artie, who would. Like to see uh, micro brewery or uh, brew pub allowed in that district. And Paul, I think you had advocated in favor of that as well at that time.
Yes, I had.
Uh, so. Um. I, I, I. Lee, Dave Roach, our building commissioner, uh, and Town Council, Chris Heap and I. Had a discussion because I wondered that if there was a brewery that was over fifteen thousand. Barrels a year, if they could exist, given they have other uses by right that are underlying. In the industrial district and whether that would satisfy an industrial district in this case, in particular, Mister Wolfson's property. But that uh, appeared not to be the case because. Uh, it's really outs, outside of the zone. We're allowing micro breweries and. Uh, uh, brew pubs, and we're allowing them to combine various uses. But that they're only allowed as we've defined them in these districts. So. Um. I, I, Lee, do we make a decision tonight whether we want to include, Paul, I'll come to you in a second. Uh, um, whether we want to include, should we take a vote on whether we want to include? Uh, the Crescent Street area or not?
Or.
The industrial district rather?
Well, I think we need to discuss it.
I, I, I appreciate that, Artie. I was asking Lee the question.
Well, uh, tonight you, I think tonight you have to finalize the language of the zoning article for the purpose of sending it to the select board. Um, and holding a public hearing on it. So just so the board understands the framework of what gets created here. Um, um, is what will be advertised and that once you create this framework, you can't, you can't make it any broader. You can always pull it back, um, but you can't make it any broader. So if you want to add um, in the industrial district, um, either in all the locations in which those districts are located. Or, or a, a, a subset of those industrial districts, it needs to be reflected in this draft that we submit to. The select board, um, and then the hearing will be set on that on September the seventh. And then you'll vote your final recommendation. And if you choose to, whatever modifications you choose to make, you'll be able to make at that time. But you can't make it broader at that point. You, you, you need to make sure that you create as much breadth as you want at this stage.
Thank you. Um, and then I guess the other note on this is that I. Um, one of the reasons we had pulled the zoning back, Paul, when you were chair, I think, was. Um, we needed to align this zoning with an updated uh, licensing, liquor licensing regime. In, in Needham. And that that has been, that has been done. The select board has met to do that. They had a public hearing on it. They've updated it so that uh, these uses, in particular, the brew pub is aligned with the alcohol policy. Um, for uh, you know, with other restaurants in towns, they have the same level of requirement. For liquor and food sales for onsite consumption. Uh, the chair recognizes Paul.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um, so I want to speak on. Two, two issues. One, one is including the industrial zone. Um, and two, just in general, so I'll take number two first. Um. Part of the reason that I wanted to defer this was to make sure that we had the wording correctly. Um, and I know, Adam, that you've been working on this very hard, as has Lee. I want to make sure that now you guys are satisfied. That um, the, the wording accomplishes the purposes that we have in mind. I know that um. Uh, when we were in front of the Finance Committee, there were Finance Committee members. Who claimed that they didn't understand the definitions of a brew pub or a micro brewery. And I didn't really see any changes to the wording here. I think we got our definitions by looking at, at um, uh, the, the, the zoning in. Towns that presently allow it. So um, uh, I just want to make sure that um, we, we've addressed. The questions that the Finance Committee raised and that we're fine on, on the, on the language that. That the people who have worked hard in finalizing this are now totally satisfied with it. On the industrial zones, um, we originally had in. I believe that we have three areas in town that are zoned industrial. Crescent Road. Um, the area along Hillside. Um, and a small area uh, up off of Highland that includes. The, what was the Three Squares Restaurant, um, affectionately remembered as, as the Pancake House.
Um. IHOP.
It was a Bickford's for a while, too.
Paul, come on, man.
Um. I think that, 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 that the Pancake House might be a, a good location for it. That's why we included it to begin with. Um, as I said back in the spring, um, I, or. Or the late winter, um, I did drive Crescent Road. Um, I thought that, that a brew pub would make sense, might, might make sense there. Um, I do not think that a brew pub or a micro brewery makes sense along Hillside at all. I, and, and I don't say that just because Jean McKnight is. Had to accuse herself be, because of that neighborhood, that, that area is not amenable. To this kind of a use, but Crescent Road could be. Um, and, and, and the IHOP re- restaurant could be. However, on Crescent Road, and I don't know the answer to this, and so I'm in favor of including brew pubs, but not micro breweries. Um, in, in the two zones, not the Hillside Avenue Zone. Um, but even on Crescent Road, it is surrounded by residential. And we do have the fifty foot setback. Um, from a residential. Um, property line. Uh. And I am not in favor of changing that fifty foot setback. Um, looking, looking at the map now, I, I question, and I don't have an answer. I question whether. A brew pub could go in there and still meet the fifty foot setback requirement. Um, from, from, from the neighboring lots, but you know, that, that would be in front of us on the special permit. And you know, the, the, the person who wants to put in a brew pub would, would have to deal with that. So. So I'm in favor of including Crescent Road and the, and the IHOP area, but not the Hillside area. By special. Your brew pub only.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to clarify. So for Crescent Street, you would exclude a micro brewery. And for the part of the industrial district where Three Squares or uh, the other uh, uh, Pancake House was. You would just permit a um. Uh.
I would exclude micro brewery, just permit a brew pub.
Okay.
Both by special.
Okay, uh, that's clear. Uh, Lee, offhand. I don't have it in front of me. I can't recall. Is there a fourth part of the industrial?
Well, the industrial district also exists um, off of Reservoir Street. If, if this is a question that you're asking me. And there is a small, a very tiny um, industrial district um, located off of Denmark Lane, close to Needham Center.
So, uh, how does the board feel about either use in reservoir? Off reservoir, which is all, you know, clearly industrial area. And immediate access to water. Um, and I, and Denmark Lane.
So reservoir is between the highway and the river? That's industrial? Um.
On the south side of Central Lab, that seems perfectly.
Yeah, on the south side of Central Lab.
That seems perfectly logical on the south side.
Yeah, I, I think that area.
I agree. I'm just looking at the map right now.
Yeah, as am I.
I would, I would like to speak up about Crescent Road, though. Um. And not that, you know, well, we were talking, we were talking about it, and then we jumped off of it.
Well, I, just because I wanted to get clarity on the other district as well, Artie, and then I'll come to you.
And Lee, what, what was the last one that you said was, wasn't?
Denmark Lane.
It's where the condos are at Denmark Lane. It's really, it's really Denmark Lane.
Oh, that doesn't make sense at all.
No, it doesn't.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense.
For I, for either used, we all agree on that.
Correct. Well, um. I, I guess a reservoir. I guess a micro brewery could be in that area of reservoir. That really is.
Oh no, I'm talking about Denmark Lane.
I don't think.
Denmark Lane just has condos, right?
So you're both speaking at what, you're both speaking at one. So I just, we're all clear and we resolve that. Neither use on Denmark Lane, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And for uh, and for reservoir, a brew pub. And a micro brewery.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
All right. So I, um, so Artie, you want to speak, uh?
Yeah, yeah, on, on, yeah, on Crescent. Um, now I appreciate the fact that we can't. Increase, we can only D K, so I can appreciate that fact. My concern about Crescent. Um, and, and for a moment, I was temporarily concerned about the fifty foot setback. I am less concerned about it because I don't want to think, I don't want to. I don't want to put micro breweries and brew pubs, making it sound like they're, they're, they're a pariah or something like that. They're not. They're just, they're. They're a restaurant, they're part of our business, they're part, they can be perfect, they can work perfectly fine unless of course is outdoor music. And entertainment, then it, then it becomes problematic in a residential area. My concern about Crescent Road. And I know some of the business owners would not be happy about this, but is the fact it, it is a residential area. You're going through a residential area to get to that. And not that there's a bunch of drunk people coming out of this thing. I'm not suggesting that. But it's a brew pub. The purpose is to go there and drink. That's the purpose. And I know a family on Crescent Road where their kid was hit by a car on Crescent Road. And that was partially, partially, it was mixed, mixed. Responsibility, but I am concerned about a brew pub on Crescent Road. I'm, I'm very concerned about that.
I understand.
Going through a residential area. You're concerned about that.
I, I agree with you. That's why the rest of us advocated to exclude Crescent Road, even if it was a smaller use, like a brew pub. Because if you've got, you have to drive through so many homes on Crescent in order to get that district. And if you've got kids playing hockey on the street, or if they're on their bikes, you know, I, it just. Presents a greater level of danger for that area, um, which is different, I think, than um. Uh, would exist on uh, directly on Highland Avenue. Um, uh, so I, I will have, so I think what might make sense is either we vote now to exclude it. Or include it. And then at least that way, we can narrow it down. After our hearing, once we've heard from more members of the community. So do we include it for now? And uh, reconsider it after our public hearing? Or do you not want to go through with Crescent Street at all?
I, I don't think we should go through Crescent Street at all, is my thought, just because that there's really, you have to go through houses and. There's, there aren't that many options.
Yes.
Okay. Right now, and Lee, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe right now restaurants are a permitted use. In the industrial zone. So you could put a restaurant on Crescent Road.
Yes.
You could put a restaurant with a liquor license on Crescent Road. I don't see a brew pub being any different than any other restaurant with a liquor license. And I've been to many restaurants in my life where I've driven through residential neighborhoods to get to the restaurant. The fact that you have to drive through a residential neighborhood to get to a restaurant doesn't mean to me that you shouldn't have a restaurant in that area. Are we prepared to change the zoning to take away the ability to have a restaurant in the Crescent Road area? Because if you can have a three squares with a full liquor license in Crescent Road. Then you can have a brew pub in Crescent Road. That's my position. And if you want to argue about it, let's include it and we can pull it back if we decide to pull it back after the hearing.
I do see, I. Um. I'm gonna share my screen for a second. And. Uh. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
So. I under, I understand uh, conceptually, Paul, what you're talking about. And yes, that's true. But the difference that I see, and I think that uh, that Natasha and Artie see here. Is it's not that you're necessarily driving through. A residential area, like you, you know, driving through residential area would be like coming up west. I get that, that's true. But our concern is more specifically that you have these. There's over twenty homes. I think there's close to twenty five homes. And unlike driving, you know, to um, Blue on Highland, when you're on a main strip. You can come to it through, you know, through Honeywell Shore, you know, or West, but you're effectively on Highland. The difference here is that if someone is drinking. You know, you're going through regardless if it's a, if it's a restaurant and if the, uh, special permit came through to us. For a restaurant in this location, I'd have the same concern for the same reason. If you've got kids here that are playing and at four o'clock in the afternoon, someone's, you know, coming out after having a boozy lunch. You know, I, you, you know, it presents a greater level of danger. Than would otherwise be the case if that use wasn't there.
So I'm hearing you say that if you had an application in front of us. To have a restaurant with a full liquor license. In that area of Crescent Road, not a brew pub, just a regular restaurant, like Three Squares. You, you would not grant the special permit.
To the, I. I would not be in favor, but I think the liquor licensing part of it is a function, is the authority of the select board. But in as much.
True for the brew pub also.
Yes, that's right. It's absolutely right. And to the extent that there was a part of that decision that came to us because it is a food, is a restaurant, is in a town, a special permit use. For exactly that reason, if there was any alcohol served, I would be, I'd be concerned. It's an elevated level of risk. Look, there's an elevated level of risk when people, you know, if you go with your wife, you know. Uh, you know, to Blue and you're having three drinks instead of two, or two drinks instead of one, and you're on. And you're on Highland Avenue, you're a drunk driver. It doesn't matter what street you're on. I understand that. But the distinction here. Is that in order to get to West. In order to get to an arterial road, you have to drive through at least twenty five or homes. And there is.
I can't think of a restaurant in Needham. In a location that you're talking about, I'll just say that I've been to many restaurants and other places where I've driven through residential neighborhoods in order to get to the restaurant.
I understand driving through a ne- residential neighborhood. I I have you driven through a residential street? Before, but you know, where the restaurant itself was on the same street?
Yeah.
And after getting.
At the end of the area. Yeah. I I just, just, just last summer, uh, well, it actually was in the fall. It was in September. Uh, when when we came, when we came back from Nantucket. Uh, my my wife and I went to a uh a seafood restaurant that was on the water on the Cape. Um, you know, we had taken the ferry across. It was dinnertime. We were hungry. And uh it was all residential that we drove through. And then we got to the water and it opened up to to uh a more industrial area. And uh, you know, went to a seafood restaurant that had a full liquor license. Um, and you know, uh. Every brew pub that I've been to. Actually had beer. And didn't have hard alcohol. Whereas Three Squares had a full liquor license with hard alcohol. Uh, I think there's more danger of 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 having an application. For a restaurant with a full liquor license, like like Three Squares in this neighborhood, that is presently a permitted use in that neighborhood. And I personally don't see the distinction between a brew pub and a restaurant.
I hear you.
And you're right. It will be in front of us. Uh, on a special permit application. And whether it's a restaurant or a brew pub, we make the decision at that time.
I understand. The chair recognizes.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I mean, I mean, I can appreciate what you're saying, Paul. I I I do. I do. I appreciate.
That's why I like you, Artie.
Yeah, I love it. No, I know. I appreciate a, you know, a a version of a comparison or a version of a of a comparison. I do understand that. But we are talking about the risk benefit aspect. I mean, whenever we do anything, there's always a version of a risk. What's the what's the risk? What's the reward? So forth and so on. I see no need to add increased risk to that neighborhood. By allowing an additional use po- use possibility. I would never, I mean, if I was in those, again, this, these are homes where the only way to get there, you're going through this fairly. Limited neighborhood or an isolated neighborhood off of a busier neigh- busier streets. I see no public benefit. Of allowing that possibility there when there's so many other possibilities in town where the risk is much less. Than the risk in Crescent Road. I I just don't see, I don't see the public benefit there. And so I don't see the need to allow that as a possibility because then the neighbors would be like, oh, wow. That could possibly happen where the odds are maybe it'll probably never happen. So if the if if, for example, I would never, you know, if someone came to us and said, two people come to us and say, now I want to put a brew pub in the old Acapulco restaurant. I want to put a brew pub in. Three Squares. I want to put a brew pub on Crescent Road. I know which way I'm going to be voting. I would never vote on Crescent Road, even if it was, you know, as a special permit, if we if we allow it as a possibility. It makes no sense. There's no logic in that. There's just simply no logic to add that risk. So, but that, you know, that's why I'm against it now and I'll be against it in two months from now. But thank you. I do appreciate the comparison of Paul with the restaurant.
I appreciate that everyone appreciates everyone else. Um.
I want to appreciate Paul, but. I do.
Appreciate Paul, but.
I I just want to say something in general. I I, when I associate a restaurant, I associate that people can go there with families, people can go there that don't drink and people can go there then drink. When you have a poo- when you have a a pub, a brew pub, usually you go there to have that specific brew. So that's how I distinguish it a little bit. I'm not saying that. You know, it's black and white, but I'm just saying that that's in my mind. A restaurant has more flexibility. Of people drinking or not drinking. A brew pub is usually a destination to drink. So that that's where I'm coming from.
So we have a.
But I appreciate Paul again.
You appreciate Paul, but and but you appreciate Paul, but we're not going to appreciate Paul. Uh, so there is, I, uh, maybe that was.
Now, I'm offended that you don't appreciate my butt.
There's there's an expression from Cape Breton that I grew up with. And it's in the same vein, you can.
Careful there, Adam. Careful, you're crossing a line. We could be getting HR involved in this one.
That's why I say it comes from Cape Breton Island and in Nova Scotia. You can pick your nose and you can pick your friends, but you can't pick your friends noses. So it's in the same way that I can appreciate, you know, uh, Paul and all of his uh uh his being. Having said that, I think we now have to come to a vote. And resolve the uh the language. I will overall end the question of industrial district. I will say, Paul, because you brought up the question of the language and the definitions, and yes, obviously, I was with you and and FinCom questioned our definition. The definite, uh, Jean, I have to give a lot of credit to you because she worked very hard. On preparing the uh the initial draft of the zoning. And it went through Town Council, uh, has more recently gone through several vets of this. It also went through the town hired. Uh, a a particular consultant uh who advises the town on alcohol licensing and so forth. Uh, who is a professional in that field. She's also had an opportunity. The language is not going to satisfy everybody. We will have, you know, some pushback in terms of the definitions. Perhaps continuing at FinCom and other areas. But I think that uh I think we've done the best that we can and it's good generally to get it to town meeting. It's just a question of, you know, including the industrial district or not. So it if I understand correctly. Natasha and I and Artie are um advocating not to include. The industrial district.
At all, not even reservoir.
But I apologize. Our, for that particular area, we have consensus. For including reservoir. And the area previously defined in the industrial district for Three Squares. For. A brew pub only.
My, uh, my, Mr. Chair, I believe it would be reservoir south of Central Ave. Is that what the consensus was?
Well, I'm not entirely. I mean, we discussed South.
Is reservoir north, reservoir north of Central Ave is going right into residential areas.
Well, both of both of the industrial districts are located south of Central.
Oh, the there isn't the industrial isn't north of reservoir?
No.
No, that's not industrial.
Okay, my apologies.
No, I can see, um, you you know, the. The industrial is a dark red and then the area that you're talking about is brown.
Yes.
So that brown area is um. Neighborhood business, it looks like.
Okay, my apologies.
So um. I I will say this. I actually am would love to see, and I'm an advocate. Like we have seen with those college students, I think, from BU. To see a massive redevelopment from Central Avenue. To the river, between the river and the highway and Highland Avenue. And I absolutely would be happy to see as a destination air uh uh business. Either a brew pub or even a micro brewery. So. I I would love to see from Highland all the way up to, you know, to Central Avenue, it to be completely redeveloped. I could see a boardwalk running along the, you know, the perimeter of um Charles River. There could be um. You know, residential areas, including some uh uh and other mixed-use businesses. And including various forms of retail. And I think this would be an absolutely complimentary use. There could also be. Some open space with a, some kind of a bandstand uh for live entertainment there to actually do some placemaking and community building. Um. So that area is a different district. But as relates to res- the industrial district on reservoir, I certainly support a brew pub. I would also support a micro brewery. Um, so that it's not uh ambiguous later. Uh, Artie, I see you nodding your head in agreement. Um, Natasha. You're nodding your head in agreement, so is uh Paul. So then we would have both uses, Lee, allowable in the industrial. Part of Reservoir Street.
We would only, um, but how about the brew pub use? The micro brewery also where Three Squares is or just a brew pub?
I think just a a brew pub there. What did we have before? Do we have a micro brewery in the Three Squares site?
No, just a brew pub.
I think the site is too small for a micro brewery.
Probably so.
I mean, I I don't, I don't know if that's totally true, but I'll go along with a. Uh, with a micro brew at that location, uh, with a brew pub at that location. Uh. So, Lee, are you clear now on? Are splitting up the industrial district?
Yes.
Much to Paul's and and Lou Wilson's chagrin on Crescent Road?
Yes.
Okay, so should we take a vote?
Yes, I think, yeah, I think. Yes, I'd like you to vote actually to send the article um to um the select board for the purpose of holding a public hearing. Um, with the two minor edits that Chris Heap, I think, had recommended to um the definition of micro brewery. Um, and also reflecting the changes that we discussed tonight to allow. Um, a brew pub and a micro brewery use in the industrial district south of um Central Avenue. And um a my, in a brew pub um um under the same framework that we had done uh previously um to so. To enable it to occur at the Three Squares location.
Can I have a motion to that effect, please?
So move.
A second.
Second.
Discussion. I will say, Paul, that I hope you, in spite of the board's vote. Uh, you'll still continue to support the actual zoning.
Oh, absolutely.
Uh, going forward.
Yeah, I I was outvoted. It happened, you know, it happens.
And I. I um, uh, I'll take a a vote. Um. Uh, I will start with I, Paul Alpert.
I.
Artie Crocker.
I.
Uh, Natasha Spata.
I.
The chair is eye, the motion passes.
Um, uh, should we have a motion now to um set the public hearing?
No, you don't need to do that. I'll I'll schedule, I'm going to schedule it for the um seventh of September.
Which is.
Same night as we.
Same night as we have.
Tonight, we're both. Hopefully, we'll have some cold brews. After the hearing, of course. Now, um. Uh, having.
Lee, is that going to work? Be- because, you know, we're starting, we're starting um Highland Avenue. For a Muzzy site at seven oh five. And that could go till ten.
Well, I thought Adam wanted to do it, and I think he wanted to start this one, I thought, at eight forty-five. Isn't that what you wanted to do, Adam?
Yeah, are we going to be able to do that? Or are we still going to be talking about Muzzy at uh at at eight forty-five?
Sorry, I think we screwed up, Lee. I think we wa- I think we wanted to can do the brewery at seven oh five.
No, we didn't.
It makes more sense.
Well, that's not, that's not what we talked about, but.
It probably makes, it makes more sense to probably.
Well, we know, we know, uh, either way, we have the um, we have the Bull Finch at seven oh five. So I I think that if we limit that to nine thirty. And at nine thirty, we take up the hearing for the brew pub. We also, on that night, have the decisions. Right for medical marijuana and another. Matter, is that right, Lee?
Um, yeah, so we're going to do the decisions that night. We we may have to have an extra meeting.
Yeah.
We were going to do the decisions on the medical marijuana for that night.
Can we talk to um? Can we talk to Bull Finch or is it too late about? Changing the time. For them to say eight fifteen?
We can do that. What we'd have to do, and what will help, we've already voted to continue it to a time certain.
Yes, exactly.
So we'd have to be, we'd have to open that hearing that night and then and continue it till eight. The to the later time. And then advertise this other one for earlier in the night.
Let's flip it. We're going to do, I.
Do the.
We'll figure out the time for this. It'll be somewhere probably around nine thirty. We're going to move forward.
Isn't that awfully late to have a public hearing? I I mean, people, you're asking people who want to come and comment. On on this.
So then.
Meeting at a nine thirty time slot.
I I I understand. I'm happy to have another meeting between September seventh. Um. You know, uh, the, you know, the following week. And do this or do this on the previous week, but we don't have to set that date right now. We can do that offline through Alex and Lee.
What's wrong with doing what Lee was suggesting where we, you know, reach out to Bull Finch, we open it, we schedule it for later at night. Um, so we have this, the hearing on the brew pubs, we have that for.
Seven fifteen.
Pray for an hour, you know, for an hour. We have it for an hour, maybe something like that. It may, and maybe it won't, maybe at most, that's what it is. Um, you know, what's wrong with doing that? That might make, there's a lot of people that are going to the Muzzy, Muzzy may very well have an interest in the. Microbrewery or brew pubs as well. So.
Lee, what's? What's involved in that? Is it just a function of, uh?
It's it's just a function of how we would put it on the agenda and how we would communicate to the, you know, so on the agenda, we would indicate that this, that that I think maybe the Bull Finch hearing was at seven oh five. And then we'd have a note that this hearing is going to be opened and continued um to, you know, to whatever time we choose um. Later that evening, and then we would advertise the other ones.
Which means that all of those. Uh, you know, consultants that they have. You know. You know, have to start at that seven oh five hour.
Why, if we.
No, they don't. No, they don't, because we we we're going to basically put on our agenda that we're going to open the hearing. And continue it to um.
With Dean that night.
Eight fifteen that night. Um, and then we'll advertise the other one, I guess, for what, what, Paul, you're suggesting, seven fifteen?
Seven fifteen.
We want to do it sooner.
Seven fifteen.
Seven, seven, ten, and then, yeah, seven, ten.
Or seven oh five, actually.
Yeah, we scheduled to hear it for the same time before.
No, I wouldn't, I I wouldn't do that. I would schedule it for seven.
But all we're, but that way we can just go right into it. We don't have to delay for three minutes or ten minutes and stuff like that. Schedule them.
Okay, fine. We can do it that way.
Thank you very much.
That makes sense.
So, uh, so that, um.
So I move that we schedule the hearing for the brew pub uh and micro brewery zoning by law. Um, that we. That we schedule the public hearing for September seventh at seven oh five.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Paul Alpert, a second by Artie Crocker. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none will come to the vote in alphabetical order. Uh, Paul Alpert.
I.
Artie Crocker.
I.
Natasha Spata. Natasha, you are muted.
Hi.
And Natasha is eye, the chair is eye. Thank you very much. Um.
Mr. 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 Chair, may I, Mr. Chair, well, may I, we we know how sometimes things run, you know, long, but sometimes they run short. I don't know how long it's actually going to take us for the uh brew pub hearing. But perhaps instead of scheduling the Muzzy continuation for eight fifteen, where we may wind up running short on the brew pub. Maybe we just set it for eight o'clock, and if we run a little bit long, we run a little bit long in the brew pub, then we pick it up.
I I understand. I'm going to give, I'm going to give that a little more thought, but I just want to finalize, go through our uh final agenda item and we can. Agenda item and we can adjourn this meeting because it's eleven o'clock. Um, so the last.
Let's, let's bring Jean back.
Yes. Alex, if you're able to do that, please.
All right, here I am and glad I'll be able to participate in the future in the microbreweries and brew pubs. Um, I, may I ask a question for clarification on um, the um. Area of Hi- of Highland Avenue at Arbor Street? Um, you, you kept referring to the Three Squares site. You, you do mean that that entire small industrial zone?
Yes, and I've, a- a- and I've driven through there, Jean. The. The only place you can put it would be where Three Squares is. The rest of that zone, there's just not enough space.
It was, and it was previous.
But we're not, we're not going to focus on just one site.
Oh, no.
No, okay, just one.
I don't think we can word it that way.
No, that would be like site, you know, whatever they call it.
Zoning.
Yes.
Okay.
So, very good. Jean, good to have you back and good to have you uh, uh. For the remainder and for your help with uh, the brewery zoning. Uh, the items for correspondence that we've received. Was an email from uh, from Lou Wilson. Uh, who emailed members of the select board and uh, the town manager and the town planner. Uh, for the select board and planning board members advocating specifically to include. Uh, uh, the brewery uh, uses in the. Um. Uh, in the industrial area, particularly including his own property on Crescent. Um. And we've now uh, resolved that direction going forward. Um. We have also a memo from uh, Kate Fitzpatrick. Um. Uh, about remote participation and the town policy going forward. Um. Uh, that's in our packet as well. And. I think. Is that it? I think that's it in our packet for correspondence, correct? Lee, do you have anything else? You are on mute.
No, I have nothing else.
All right, so uh, it's ten fifty-nine.
Yeah, I just, I just want to um, ask Lee if she can make sure that she keeps her. Her ears open on the passage of the bill to allow for. Continuation of Zoom meetings and to. Get a copy of the bill or at least get some sort of a, a, a website um, link. To me and to Jean. Anybody else on the board who wants to try to read it, but you know, so that, so that we can review it as soon as possible.
Sure.
Very good. Thank you very much. Uh, should, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
I have a motion by Artie Crocker to adjourn a second.
Second.
By Natasha Spata. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none will come to the vote. Uh, Paul Alpert.
Hi.
Artie Crocker.
Hi.
Natasha Spata.
Hi.
Jean McKnight.
Hi.
The chair is eye. We sit adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Okay, bye, gang.
Good night.
Night.